Do allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. At this time, I would also like to have a moment of silence. This past week, we lost one of our police chiefs, Darryl Plath, if you hadn't heard yet. And he serviced our community for 25 years. So if we could just have a moment of silence for... Okay, thank you. Tonight with us, first up, we have recognition of our K-9 Ozzy and Officer Mike Schmitz. And Oz has been servicing the community for nine years. And he will go into retirement. So we want to thank you, Officer Schmitz and Oz. Thanks for your service. And Chief Schaefer will be here to say a few words. He's here to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and to the community. Tonight, as you said, we want to take this opportunity to thank our K-9 team for their committed service to the city. And we want to bid farewell to Ozzy as he's retired from service. After serving nine years with the Hastings Police Department, Ozzy was retired on February the 9th. He's been partnered with Officer Schmitz since 2011 and has retired to a life of leisure at home with the Schmitz family. This team has many notable accomplishments and have been the face of the Hastings Police Department through numerous public demonstrations over the years. Ozzy came to us from Czechoslovakia in 2011. Officer Schmitz and his partner completed 12 weeks of training at the St. Paul Police Academy, graduating in June of 2011. Ozzy's first public debut was July 22nd of 2011 at our own Rivertown Days celebration. So I see Christie's here. Since that time, he's logged nearly 200 hours of public relations and demonstrations. In addition to these activities, he's conducted numerous area searches, article searches, drug searches, tracks, and apprehensions. Here are just a few highlights. In 2011, he apprehended a suspect that was fighting with our officers on the Hastings Bridge. Later on in 2011, he tracked and located a suicidal subject who was off their meds and could not be found. In 2012, after a three-square-block area search, he found a drug suspect who was hiding under a deck who had fled from the Drug Task Force agents. In 2013, he tracked and apprehended a burglary suspect who they tracked for four miles. In '14, he apprehended a pursuit suspect who had fled from a vehicle and attempted to break into a house and hide, and Ozzy tracked him and apprehended him. On a lighter note, in June of 2015, they placed second place in regional trials for criminal apprehension. These and many, many more show the value of a K-9 team to a police department and a community. I want to thank Officer Schmitz and his family for the time and commitment to this program. Ozzy was not only a patrol partner, but he's also a family member as well. I want to thank Ozzy for his nine years of service in keeping our city safe and extend my personal thanks and gratitude to Officer Schmitz for his 15-year commitment to the K-9 program in the city of Hastings. This was his second dog, so he's got quite a tenure here with us as a K-9 trainer. So with that, I'd entertain a round of applause.
So I just had a little something I wanted to present. I'll present Mike first, and this is, if you want to step forward. This is just a plaque that just recognizes Officer Mike Schmitz in recognition of your 15 years as a K-9 handler for the city.
Thank you very much.
While Ozzy can't chew on this, this was a replica of the... We actually had a company took a picture of Ozzy, and this is what's displayed on the side of our squad cart. So this is a copy of that with his name on his collar that you can use and display at home with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Council members, are there any corrections to the minutes from February 3rd? Seeing none, they are approved. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council that is in the audience at this time? Anyone that would like to speak to the council at this time? Council members, are there any council items to be considered? Okay, seeing none. Counsel, I'd like to accept or I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Fults, councilmember Brox, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? This motion prepares. Okay, for this item, we have an introduction by community developer John Hensman. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. I'm going to pull up the item that we have before us first tonight. To start out the meeting, we have a public hearing to consider an ordinance amendment for annexation. The annexation would be for this 40-acre property located just west of General Seaborn Drive, south of the Sees Church property, and southwest of Northridge Drive. The action before us today is to consider an ordinance amendment, which would extend the city limit boundaries to include this area. The area right now is presently within Ninninger Township. The application is being brought forward by TC Land, and it's on property owned by Joel Bauer and Daniel Bauer as representatives of the Walter and Roselia Bauer Trust. So they're bringing forward the land for development. What we're doing tonight and what we're not doing tonight. What we're doing tonight is considering the annexation extension of the city boundaries to incorporate this area. What's left to do tonight is to actually consider what will be built within there. That'll come at a different date. We will have future applications that'll need to come forward here for preliminary plat, final plat, rezoning, and a comprehensive plan amendment. Those land use applications would follow upon approval of this annexation here. So that's when we're going to take a look at the real development itself and what it looks like. When you take a look at the annexation itself, we look at our comprehensive plan to consider whether we should look at annexing property. This property was included within our 2030 and 2040 comprehensive plan as land to be included within the city. The land was given a designation of low-density residential development, which this concept plan would comply with there. When you take a look at the property itself, to the north, there's farmland owned by the Sees Church. Also, to the northwest and west, there's farmland. To the south of it, you do have an aggregate pit that is active, which you can see from the delineation at this location here. The developer is aware that this is an active mining pit. And during the preliminary plat discussions, we'll have some further discussion on any further actions related to that. But this aggregate mine right now is in Ninniger Township and outside of the city limits itself. City of Hastings is located directly to the east here, as you can see from the development. We did provide notification of this to Ninniger Township with the annexation, as we're obligated to do. So we... They have been provided notice of this. And when we take a look at an annexation, we look consistently with the comprehensive plan, which this is. There's a need for residential lots within the city. The recent housing study that we have conducted here is proof that we are in need of further housing within the city. This would provide that. When you take a look at the development itself and how it might be subdivided up, this is a concept plan that was developed by the developer. Shows General Seaborn Drive towards the east end here, Northridge Drive as an extension and Collector Road going through the site, and then various points of connection throughout there. The area over here would be 60 units of what is termed villa housing, which is a smaller lot, single-family home or detached townhome type of product. And then the rest of the subdivision here and other 60 lots would be single-family development. As far as the details of that, they'll be working on this concept plan when they develop their preliminary and final plat for this property. So again, this is a public hearing for the annexation ordinance. The consideration of that requires a simple majority of council for passage. You can open the public hearing at this time, or I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
At this time, the public hearing is open. Anyone want to speak to this portion of the public hearing? If you'd like to, you could do as this stands. State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Mike Hamilton. I'm the attorney for Ninniger Township. And the other gentleman that's with me here is John Brimmer, and he's the chairman of the Planning Commission for Ninniger Township. And we're here to object to the annexation. Annexation seems to be too easy of a process for people to come and take our Ninniger Township land. We're missing our own town board meeting tonight because we thought it was more important to come here and deal with the annexation problem that Ninniger Township is having. It's something that we certainly would like to curb before there's no longer a Ninniger Township. That seems to be the direction that we're heading in with all the annexation that goes on from Hastings, Rosemount, into Ninniger Township. Now, the land that's subject to the annexation is farmland. Most of Ninniger Township is farmland. It's an agricultural community. It's got a rich agricultural history. Ninniger Township generally objects to the annexation of its farmland. We keep taking the farmland. It's always taken for residential or commercial usage, so we're losing all that agricultural property. Here, it's 40 acres, and they're looking at putting 120 housing units into those 40 acres. Now, as cities grow and take our country's agricultural property, our country's production of food diminishes, and it requires that we find our food sources elsewhere, sometimes outside the country and most likely at higher prices. That's one detriment to taking the agricultural property from Ninniger Township. He also alluded to the fact that the proposed development is right next door to Solberg Aggregate, which is a rock quarry. And that rock quarry does create loud noise and considerable dust, which is a fact that we think that potential homeowners should be apprised of before they buy a unit in that particular development. Also, we've noticed that the blasting from the quarry does cause some damage to housing, even housing that's further away from the quarry pit than this proposed housing development, which includes cracked walls and foundations. So again, we don't like to see our agricultural property taken. Sooner or later, we're not going to have any, and Ninniger Township won't exist. And the secondary problem, we think, is the quarry that's right next door that we think that homeowners should be apprised of if this particular project goes forward.
Are you done, Mike? Yeah. I've got a question and a comment. I guess my comment would be, if this is annexed, it is developed. We know from talking with the people that run the quarry now that this 40 acres is the same kind of rock that's under or what's in Solberg's pit. Now, if the day comes that you need this rock, how are you going to get to it if it's developed? And the other question I have, and this is something that I've heard just rumbling around, but is this 40 acres the only parcel that's going to be annexed? I know you had a different map up there. There's two 40-acre parcels to the west that I heard were going to also possibly be annexed. Is there anything to that? That's the question I have.
John, can you answer that at all, or...
Sure. Excuse me, guys. I'll go back to that one map here that I think you're referring to here.
Yeah.
So you're talking about those two there?
This one right there.
Okay. Yeah, as far as any other annexations, I've not had any conversations with anyone on that. So certainly no application and no preliminary conversations, or any kicking of the tires around on that one there, no.
Okay. I wanted just to clear that up because I was asked about that.
Okay.
So at least for right now, I guess, the way to say it, it's just that 40-acre parcel is what you're looking at.
Correct.
Okay.
For now.
Yeah. So that's what I've got, unless you've got something else, Mike.
Well, that's all we have.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys, for our time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
It's a lot different being out on this side of the table instead of back there.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Welcome, Christie.
My name is Christie Bars, and I live at 723 South Oaks Drive. I am here as a representative of the Hastings Chamber of Commerce tonight. As many of you know, a big piece of the Chamber of Commerce is business retention. And the key to business retention is really understanding the challenges that our current businesses have. And so we survey our local businesses on an annual basis with one-on-one visits and then also with an annual survey that we send out through our e-blast. And the two number-one concerns have been workforce shortage and then declining customers or client base. So as we talk about workforce shortage, there are really four pillars that are involved in that, and that is housing, transportation, affordable childcare, and then education. And so when we break those four down and we ask our businesses what would be most impactful to them, overwhelmingly, it's been housing. Transportation, second, but housing, first. And as we look at our transportation studies, which I know that you've been doing quite a bit of, our transportation, especially public transportation, doesn't come without ridership numbers. So I'm here just with a general avocation for residential growth. I also just left our Regina Hospital Board meeting. I'm a board member there on the trustees. They gave their permission for me to advocate for them for residential growth as well. They're seeing a decline in their birthing center. And I don't know if anyone had heard, but the River Falls Center just recently closed their birthing center. So the need for young families is large for our hospital. They also are really interested in the senior housing as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Hello, I'm Lisa Hedin. And interim Superintendent Jeff Pesta, we're here on behalf of the Hastings School District speaking on behalf of residential development and growth for the city of Hastings. As you may well know, we've been experiencing declining enrollment for a number of years, and 10-plus, and we project that to continue into the future. We would like to just enter into the record just a one-page graph documenting the student enrollment in our district since 2012-13. And it shows a constant decline. So we're the orange, and we're in constant decline, 1% to 2% of our student population on average. Every student brings in roughly, because we're funded on a pure pupil basis, roughly $10,000 per pupil annually. So if we lose 5, 10, 50 students every year, we're having to make do with less. And we've seen that as we've closed schools and consolidated administration. And I think we've maintained a very strong school district, and we want to continue to do that. But a key to that, and this is district-wide, but we would support residential housing development within our district.
Thank you, Lisa.
Questions?
Good evening, Council. Bill Cruck with Solberg Aggregate. We manage the quarry that's just to the south of the property. And I just want to come in today and just kind of mention that it is a fully active quarry. We do blasting two to three times per month. We operate typically from April through November. It is in production Monday through Friday, typically seven to five. And it is something that we do put seismographs out to make sure we do keep in check with the neighbors that are across General Seaborn and with the church and the local houses. It's just something I want to go on record stating that with houses that close to vicinity, we will do our best... I'm not here to say no or yea or whatever to the annex. I just know that with our process, we have 20-plus years of materials on that property. So we plan to be there quite a while yet. So we will most likely have conversations with neighbors if they do move in just because of the noise and the type of process we use. It's just something I just want to get on record stating that they have to be aware of. And if it does go into residential development, that the people that are moving in are aware of what's going to be there. So they understand that there is blasting going on. There are high walls in that area that are 130 feet tall. It's kind of an industrial spot down in there that's tucked in. So that's all I have. Unless somebody has any questions specific to the process we use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. My name is Rob Hallberg, 1335 Eighteenth Street West. I'm here tonight on behalf of the St. Paul Area Association Realtors, specifically Kyrie Duckett, who is the Governmental Affairs Director. On behalf of the 7,300 members of the St. Paul Area Association Realtors, SPAR is pleased to support the ordinance for annexation. As the region continues to increase its population, insufficient housing inventory will be the greatest obstacle to ensuring that the dream of homeownership is available for more families. Whereas healthy markets, in which neither buyers nor sellers are disproportionately advantaged, generally contain between five and six-month supply of housing, inventory levels in Hastings and the entire metro have plummeted in recent years and continue to tighten with the net migration to the Twin Cities. To meet the demand of additional residents, housing inventory that contains a variety of life psycho housing choices and price options is essential to meeting the needs of consumers. Aging baby boomers, an increase in single heads of households, and changes in household size, coupled with many people's desire to live closer to work and family, all point us in the direction of building with greater housing density and diversity in mind. Fundamentally, housing choices available in one community have an effect throughout the region. In that regard, housing construction in Hastings continues to lag. While the ordinance for annexation is guided by the Musa Extension Plan for Low Density Residence, Realtors are heartened that the city is working with developers to help meet the demands for homes and close the gap with its peer communities. As this development progresses, SPAR encourages the city to prioritize the retention of natural green spaces and affordable lot sizes. Smaller lots are critical to creating housing units that are accessible for low- and medium-income families and buyers. By reining in costs per lot, Hastings frees up existing affordable housing units for the rest of the market, especially for first-time homebuyers, who continue to value natural recreation opportunities more than traditional slide-and-swing playgrounds. We applaud the city's timely and efficient consideration of the annexation. SPAR will continue to monitor the council's actions as rezoning, preliminary, and final plats are reviewed, and look forward to working with you to expand housing opportunities for the present and future residents of Hastings. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any other comments from the audience? Any other comments from the audience? Public hearing is now closed. Council, discussion? Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I think it is important to note that the city of Hastings has a legal right to annex this property by Minnesota statute. The city can annex any properties that it would like to that abut the city limits. And so that is why we have this proposal before us tonight. It is a legal request. Thank you.
Councilmember Vine?
Thank you, Your Honor. To follow up with that comment by Councilor Balsanik, and maybe John, can... This was brought to the city, though. The city did not go annex this. The owners of the property, Ninniger, came to the city to ask to be annexed. I just want to clarify that.
Sure, council member. Yes, I can clarify that. We did not actively pursue this property for annexation. The owners of the property approached the city as to our desire for annexation. When we set up our comprehensive plan, we look at areas in which we would consider growth to occur, not necessarily where we would go out and seek growth to come in. So what we are is responding to a request that was brought before us.
Thank you. Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, I have a question about the gravel pit and the explosives that are used there. When I was door knocking in 2018, I was visiting friends who were in one of the cul-de-sacs that are just across the way there. And they did make comment about how when explosions happen in the gravel pit, that it rattles their whole house. And they had like a big house. It was really well-built. And I swear, they said something to the fact that it shakes things off the walls even. And so is there some kind... I am supportive of this development. But do we have, as we're moving forward with this, an obligation to any developers or homeowners in that area to be taking this into consideration, the seismic activity that occurs in that general facility and how it could impact the wellness of occupants with any homes there?
Sure, council member. From a regulatory standpoint, I'm not really sure, you know, legal obligations under that one. You know, from an identification standpoint, I think it is good practice that any future homeowner of that subdivision knows what they're buying and understands, you know, the potential consequences of that. And so we'll be discussing that more with the preliminary plat when that comes forward, when we have a design and we could take a look at the impacts to houses a little more closely at that point. But it's something that the future homeowners should be aware of, absolutely.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do want to state, too, having listened to the two gentlemen from Ninniger Township, I think, I certainly don't speak for everybody on the DS, but I know we do hear you. I mean, I understand your concerns in regard to land, in regard to our food. That is not something we take lightly, I don't take lightly. And at the same time, however, looking at what's best for the city of Hastings. And sometimes that makes this decision a little bit harder to do. I, too, support this annexation primarily because of the fact that we didn't go for the land. This, we've got an owner who's interested in selling, so it seems to me to be the best fit. And I think a wonderful thing for the city of Hastings. I am concerned about the quarry. I don't know from the builder's standpoint what legally they have to disclose. I don't know if people know enough to say, hey, because I wouldn't have, you know. How close is the place that has explosions near my home? I wouldn't think to ask those questions. So I don't really know how all of that works out. But I am in support of it, but do want Ninniger Township to understand that. I hear you and understand your concerns for, you know, keeping our farmland, you know, as intact as possible.
Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate all the different insights. I think what it does is it paints a pretty... Sorry. Paints a pretty good picture of what the overall situation is. There's a lot of things that housing can impact. You know, regarding taking agricultural space, it's a very valid point. Not that the proposed layout is necessarily a final one, but it seems to be pretty efficient when it comes to using up the space and very consistent with smaller lot sizes that, you know, really that's the direction that demand is starting to trend towards. So, you know, we're not putting three houses on here. This land will serve quite a bit of people in a comfortable way, however, not cramped. You know, I think it is a good point that this is not something that we've sought. It is a free-market situation, and we were approached... When we look at some of the other things that we've been confronted with recently, you know, with Shepherd Valley land and things like... you know, with Shepherd Valley land and things like that, it's very clear that we're, we're not sitting on a lot of opportunities within our own current borders to, to build out. We can onesie-twosie here and there, but we're simply not in a situation where we have a lot of open land to, to develop. It's an older town and that's part of it. So, you know, I do support this. I think it's good for our community. It will help open up some inventory for, for people to move on to that next phase in their lives. And then, of course, those single-family homes that they're, they're selling will then make way for, hopefully, a way to repopulate our schools and so forth. So I think, you know, it's really about this whole cycle and what this can help aid in, and along with some other projects that are, you know, underfoot currently. So I do support this.
Councilmember Brox?
I don't want to restate what everyone else has already said, but I guess what I can add to it, and digging back in the recesses of my memory from law school, that in real estate transactions, there is a concept called duty to disclose. And I don't know that that is the city's responsibility. I don't believe it is. But in a real estate situation, there is a duty to disclose certain things about the land. I don't know if that always includes proximity of a mine. I don't know what Minnesota law requires. I'm not going to say that I'm a legal expert in this area. But I do know that there is a concept called duty to disclose, which I believe would be applicable in this situation. And that is obviously between the developer and the future property owners. But we sit up here a lot talking about how to crack the nut of more housing in Hastings. And so we had this conversation last week at our council meeting, and I'm very excited that we have another opportunity sitting in front of us tonight where we get to say yes to more housing in Hastings and more opportunities for people to move who might already have a smaller home or an older person who wants to move into a smaller home. And I just think we need all kinds of housing in Hastings. And I know when Mayor Fassbender took office, one of the things that we started throwing around was the term "housing for all." And I think very much this fits into that category, and so I will be supporting it and voting yes.
Councilmember Fulch?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to take one moment to thank Kristi Bars of the Chamber and Lisa Hedin and the new superintendent also for coming forward representing the school district and voicing your concerns. I see Derek Jager of the YMCA as well, and some of the representatives from there. And I know that everyone is very, very concerned about the need for housing growth. We, as a council, this last year have had a lot of conversations about this, as housing being our number-one priority that we really have to take very seriously and have a solid plan for how it is that we're going to move our community forward, because it's not acceptable to have declining kindergarten enrollment for the last decade. And when we look at growth, we have plateaued, and we all know that target left. And so lots of folks would, you know, like to see business growth, and for businesses to want to come into our community, it's going to require that we, we grow rooftops first. And so, so I appreciate you coming forward and taking the time, you know, to testify, because it's applicable to both this development and then the senior housing complex that we'll be discussing in a little while. So thank you.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. Sitting here on the council, one of the reasons I've been on the council is that I have always felt that I could represent senior citizens of this community. And this may come as a shock to some of you here in the council and probably in the audience, but believe it or not, I'm a senior citizen. Okay?
No.
And we have many seniors in the community who are looking for a place to downsize. And we don't have anything right now, not enough at any rate, to, to meet this supply. This development is certainly going to help alleviate that problem, along with some others that we have in the pipeline through the years. Councilmember Brox mentioned that we talked about our growth last week. This is what we call our 2040 Plan. It's our long-range look at where Hastings is going in terms of business, in terms of residents, in terms of population growth or decline. And the one thing that really hit me right between the eyes last week, Rusty Feifield is our Economic Development Director, he did the presentation. And the one thing that really shocked me was that by the time we get to 2040, if we don't do anything and just kind of have what we have, the, the projected residency per household in Hastings is going to be 2.34. That means it's going to go way down, way down. It's going to hurt our businesses. It's going to hurt our churches. It's going to certainly hurt our schools, as has been stated by the folks coming up here right now. And so we have to, I want to be careful with this. We don't necessarily promote things happening here in the community, but what we want to do as a council is to supply the appropriate tools so that businesses, developers of housing, our school system can do what they do best. And so here we are. We had a developer come, we had a property owner come to the city and say, we want to help expand the growth in this city. Half of the one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and...
Hundred and twenty?
Hundred and twenty units, as was stated, are going to be what are called villa homes, which are detached townhomes. They'll be a little smaller in scale, very appropriate and very attractive to our retirees. Now, what Mr. Feifield, our economic developer, pointed out is that as we move our senior citizens into housing like this, villas and townhomes, these are people that don't want to move. They don't want to move out of Hastings. They do want to downsize, though. And by, by allowing them the opportunity to find these villas, to find these townhomes, what this does is they move out, their home becomes for sale, three-bedroom home, two-bedroom home, families with children are more than likely going to be moving in. And so if we can continue with this kind of growth, we won't be stuck with a 2.34 population per household. That's going to really stagnate, especially our businesses. And as a former educator, I'm deeply concerned about what the possibilities are to expand the educational opportunities of our children as they grow up and, you know, get their education. These are our future doctors. I look at my grandchildren, I look at their friends, and I say, I hope you're going to be the doctor that takes care of me someday. I hope you're the attorney that's going to handle something for me someday. I hope you're going to be the businessperson that's going to supply a nice restaurant for my wife and me to go and eat in. And allow for our community to grow. So our 2040 Plan, we've, we've taken a very close look at this in terms of what the possibilities are. Within our city limits, we're, we're extremely limited in terms of what we can do to expand our housing. If your residents, and I'm assuming you are, sitting out here, think about where's the vacant land within the city's borders? Very little. Ten acres here, twelve acres there, maybe twenty or thereabouts. But the thing is, is that a developer is, because of the fees, because of the price of the housing, because of what their contractors are demanding in terms of what it costs to build a house or a housing unit, it's a matter of quantity. You know, they can't make that much of a profit building ten houses. They can't make that much of a profit even building fifty houses. So this is something that's going to come in the future. Looking at what is out there, adding on to what we have here, we're fortunate in that we could end up with as much as three hundred housing units in the next two and a half to three years in the city of Hastings. And this, to me, is exciting, because I got on the council a thousand years ago, right at the beginning of the recession, and our housing just went down to nothing. And there are communities out there, cities out there, that are providing a hundred housing starts a year, a hundred and fifty housing starts a year, and Hastings is only providing ten a year, seven a year, twelve a year. That is not healthy for a city of our stature. And so we, as a council, want to provide the means so that this city can grow, prosper, and develop a community that we can all be very, very proud of. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Vine?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I appreciate my colleagues' ideas and visions and excitement over this, but I got to remember, what we have in front of us today is we're just getting approached by the Bauer family to ask to be annexed. And I think, I like the concepts and ideas, but we, I don't think we're there yet. I think, I like the goal, I think the goal is, I'm going to make the motion that we approve the annexation from the TC Land LLC, Roseneen Bauer, to the city. We'll get to that next point and that next excitement to get there. But I think priority one, we need to worry about this, not so much the concept drawings, but we got to worry about, let's get the land in here first to get to that next vision. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
All right. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Lund, he did want to speak. Sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, because then I will.
No, we're good.
Okay. Well, I will, I will say a couple of things. I, you know, I truly believe these are exciting times for Hastings. I've lived here my whole life, and we've always talked about growth. We've, we've always talked about working with the Chamber, working with the school, working with ministerial, to create a vision for Hastings. That's why we're here. Hastings needs this, not only just for residents, but for our commerce and our community. We need things to grow. We need all housing, as we stated. That was what we started saying last year. We need housing for all. We need places for seniors to go. We need places for new young families to go. We need places that are in a smaller house and they wish to go to a larger home like this. I think it comes with, it just comes together. And we did not go after this. They came to us, and that's what we have to take into consideration, is we're not approaching people, they're coming to us. So with a part of that, I, I, I totally understand the agriculture area, and I've talked to many people from the Ninniger area. There's nothing more than I'm proud of than to drive to our community and have farmland outside of our community. It's a, it's a healthy site. It's, I love seeing cornfields in the middle of our community over on the Consimius property. That's healthy for a community. It's good for kids to learn about agriculture and, and just from the foundation of that. So I think Hastings is moving in a, in a, just a wonderful direction, and with the help of our Chamber and school and the residents supporting us up here, what we are talking about, that's what we need to be a community. So I too am going to support this, and there's already a motion on the table. And all those in favor of that motion? Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails.
Thank you.
Second reading of the ordinance, council, I would accept a motion to adopt an ordinance of the city of Hastings extending its corporate limits.
That was...
Oh. Okay. Sorry. I didn't, I forgot to read that, though. Okay. Another public hearing, establishment of TIF District Number Eight, Real Estate Equities, Schoolhouse Square, Senior Housing. John, welcome again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. I want to go through a general introduction of some of the actions that we have coming before us tonight related to the Schoolhouse Square Senior Housing Apartment development. There's really two distinct actions that we're looking at, or two groups of actions we're looking at tonight. One of them relates to the establishment of a tax increment financing district, or a TIF district. As you said just a minute ago, we are going to be holding the public hearing to consider public testimony, to consider the establishment of that district, and there is a resolution within your packet to approve the establishment of that district as well. We'll have Rusty Feifield, our Economic Development Coordinator, and Jessica Green, our financial advisor, speak to that in a little more detail here in just a moment as we open up the public hearing for that. So that, the public hearing and the actions related to that are looking specifically at the tax increment financing district itself. Now, with the final action of that, you may, you may wait to hear the land use approvals first, then take final action, if that's what you choose to do in the agenda. We're, we're available to, to, to listen to both of those. With the land use approvals, that's the next four items on you. That's the preliminary and final plat, special use permit for building height, site plan, and the amendment of an existing development agreement. That'll come after the public hearing and the discussion of the TIF district itself. With that, when we did hold a public hearing at the Planning Commission on Monday night, I'll get into more detail about that one. I think it's been general practice of the city council that in areas that have not officially advertised as a public hearing, that the council may allow comments directed to them on items that were not discussed at the Planning Commission. I'll go through a summary of that when we get to that point. So to start out, our actions related to Schoolhouse Square, we will have a tax increment financing discussion. And at this point, am I calling up Rusty or Jessica? Jessica itself? Okay. So let me pull this up for you. There it is.
Madam Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm Jessica with Northland Securities. We have a brief presentation for you tonight before we get into the public hearing and receive comment, just to provide some detail about the request that is before the city, should anybody be here having questions. So I am just going to jump right in, and if you have any questions as we go, feel free to let me know. And I'll apologize to Councilmember Balsanik and Councilmember Vaughn for having to sit through this presentation a second time. So before the city is an application from Real Estate Equities LLC to establish a housing TIF district, and this will be to provide assistance for the construction of ninety units of affordable senior housing. The site is located at 101 Tenth Street East, and this is adjacent to Schoolhouse Square. There are two parcels that are being proposed to be in the district, approximately 2.07 acres. The site is currently vacant, and the district would include both of the parcels plus the adjoining right-of-way. So here, we've got just a graphic of the proposed TIF District Number Eight. So in orange are the two parcels that are proposed to be placed in the TIF district. And then around the edge of the map, you'll see this dotted line. And this is actually the proposed modification of the Vermillion Street redevelopment project area. So we've got a couple of additional actions related to the adoption of the TIF district. And those two things are the proposed expansion of the Vermillion Street redevelopment area, and that's where you were seeing that black line. Currently, the Vermillion Street redevelopment area, the northern end of that sort of hits right along that Schoolhouse Square area, so we're proposing to expand the redevelopment area. And the reason that we're doing that is because all TIF districts must essentially reside inside a project area. So rather than establish a completely separate project area, we are proposing to expand the existing area. The other thing that we're proposing to do is to modify the Vermillion Street redevelopment plan. One, to incorporate that with the TIF plan. Two, and to, of course, include those additional parcels. Currently, the existing redevelopment plan is a standalone document, so we're proposing to incorporate that with the TIF... So we're proposing to incorporate that with the TIF plan so that you've got one document to track, essentially just to streamline things a bit. So a general overview of tax increment financing, financing, excuse me, tax increment financing is a method to capture the increase in tax base from development. The increments are generated by an increase in the property taxes resulting from the increase in the tax base or the valuation of the property. There is a fixed term to capturing increments depending on the type of district you're choosing to work on. So in this case, we're considering a housing district. The maximum duration there is twenty-six years. If you were looking at a different type of district, that duration would likely be something different. The property taxes or increments attributed to the increase in valuation are then used to finance or pay for eligible project costs. So as, as the development costs are incurred upfront, that TIF is generated over time and then used to pay back those project costs. So that's often why, when you're talking about tax increment financing districts, you're often hearing the term pay-as-you-go financing because as those increments are received, you're repaying the obligations for the district. So the property taxes on the base valuation will continue to be payable to the local taxing jurisdiction. So essentially, those base taxes are locked at the time of establishment. The difference between the base valuation and the new valuation based on development is what is captured through TIF. We are proposing that HEDRA act as the authority for the district. If approved, HEDRA has acted as the authority in the past for other TIF districts. And being that you must elect an authority to either govern or manage the district, we've assumed that the city would elect that HEDRA would do that again. So moving on to the actual project before you that we're calling Schoolhouse Square, we are looking at a total project valuation of about fourteen point four million. So what you're looking at in the bottom in tan is the existing taxes that are paid to the various jurisdictions. So around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Based on that captured valuation, you're looking at about fourteen million, two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred dollars of new valuation created based on the project that's before you. So this slide is just meant to show you the existing taxes that are received by each taxing jurisdiction. So that's the base, and that will continue to be received whether or not the council decides to move forward. That middle column is if the TIF is approved, what the city and other jurisdictions, jurisdictions, excuse me, jurisdictions will collect. And then on the very, very last column, what you're looking at is the captured taxes if TIF is approved per year. So you'll see that city, county, and the other special taxing jurisdictions remain the same. The school district will go up because of the referendum market value and the way that those taxes are collected. They're spread a bit differently than the tax capacity taxes, which is how the city, the county, and the school district taxes are spread. So there's just a bit of a difference in how the voter-approved levies are spread. So this slide just takes those combined taxes, and that's what you're seeing in that tan on the bottom. And then in the gray area, what you're seeing is the taxes that are captured for TIF. So just taking that table and combining that here. And then based on the analysis that we've done and the project and what we assume that the value will be, what we're showing you here is the amount of tax increment that we would assume to be distributed to the city from the county. So that middle column with the total of three million, three fifty-five, six ninety-three, that's what we would assume would be collected in increment, again, if that valuation is that fourteen point four million. What we've assumed is that the city would retain eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars to pay for any administrative costs that you incur as a result of administering the district. And what that means is that there is a net of three million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and one dollars available to provide to either the developer or other eligible projects that would occur here in Hastings with affordable housing. And then on the very last column, what you're seeing there is that we are just providing a present value. So we are discounting that based on a five percent discount rate. So just taking in today's dollars, that three point two. So if the developer or other projects were to go out and try to receive financing now, what they could likely get in a loan is about one point six five million. And then over time, what's collected to pay that back is that three point two seven million. Northland is in receipt of the application that is also before the city, and we have done a review of that information. And we have determined that the rental assumptions are reasonable, as are the operating expenses. We've also determined that the debt service coverage requirement for a loan would be achieved with a combination of tax increment financing, low-income housing tax credits, and also grants. There is an application to the Dakota County CDA for a bonding allocation and hope funds. That application is under review. Based on our discussions with the CDA, we understand that there are more, more applications than there are allocations for tax credits. So there will be a review by the CDA. And based on the results of that review, that will set the framework for the use of TIF here in Hastings. What we have determined is that our opinion is that the current market conditions, the project as proposed would not happen solely through private investment in the reasonably foreseeable future. Now, that is not to say that no project would occur on this particular site. It is just that this project as proposed would not proceed. So when looking at the potential establishment of a TIF district, you, of course, want to look at the potential public benefits. And in this case, you are looking at a multifamily development that will fit the character of the surrounding neighborhood, a well-designed building constructed out of high-quality materials, and a provision of affordable housing units here in Hastings, and that is ninety units of affordable senior housing. Summary of considerations here. Establishment of tax increment financing district number eight. What we are proposing and what is stated in the plan is that the maximum duration would be set at twenty-six years. So that is the statutory limitation. We are estimating that three million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars in tax increment revenue would be collected by the county and provided to the city. The establishment of the TIF district at the full duration provides flexibility for the proposed project, as well as for options of supporting low-income eligible housing in the future. Based on our review, what we have looked at in terms of the total project financing is that this potential project that is before you would likely receive less support than that full twenty-six years. But we won't know what the entire funding mix is until Dakota County CDA has finished their review of that tax increment, or, excuse me, the low-income housing tax, tax allocation. What we are doing is simply creating the ability to use tax increment financing by establishing the district. And again, that actual use will be determined later on. So that development agreement would be reflective of the final financing mix that's determined. Approval of that agreement with the developer for TIF assistance would be considered at a later date, being that multiple funding sources are being sought by the developer, including those housing tax credits. We don't know exactly what that funding mix is going to look like at this time. We would delay requesting certification of the TIF district with the county pending approval of that development agreement. So essentially, we are looking for the city council to consider establishing that district this evening. But we would not certify that over to the county until the city has said we have a development agreement that we're comfortable with. So actions taken to date. The TIF plan was distributed to the county and the school district in early January. We have received no comments from either. The Planning Commission reviewed the modification to the redevelopment plan and the TIF plan on Monday evening, and they gave their approval. HEDRA met on February thirteenth, and they provided their approval of the modification to the redevelopment area, the modification of the redevelopment plan, and also provided approval on the establishment of the TIF district and that TIF plan. The HEDRA actions, of course, are subject to approval by the city council. Next steps is to receive public comment this evening at the public hearing. And then later on in your, in your agenda, excuse me, you do have a resolution considering the modification of the redevelopment area and plan, the establishment of the tax increment financing district number eight, and approval of the TIF plan that goes along with it. With that, I am happy to take any questions that you might have. And if not, you are certainly welcome to receive public comment at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Lund.
I won't touch the microphone this time. Thank you, Your Honor. Just a clarification. You had mentioned that we are likely to receive less than the twenty-six years as far as support. We would, we would be able to learn about what that number would be first before establishing any duration, any, finalizing any duration within the TIF, correct? Or?
So the action this evening is just to establish the district. It would take further review of the final mix of what that financing looks like for the development to determine how much TIF is actually necessary. And we would work with staff, and that would come back before HEDRA, et cetera, to review that development agreement and come to an agreement there.
Okay. So we would have all of the necessary information ahead of time prior to inking anything? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Balsanek.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not sure if I'm jumping the gun here or not, but could you explain what the city's purview is with all of this in terms of making sure that what goes on in the TIF district is of quality and is maintained and so forth?
Can you say more?
At some point, I'm not sure if it was at the HEDRA meeting last week or not, there, there was talk about, because the city has a vested interest financially in what is going on, the city therefore has the obligation and the right to ensure that that TIF district is a quality district. Is that correct?
Yes, and I believe that this development, just like any other in Hastings, would go through some permitting review, making sure that the building is, you know, to standards and various ordinances within the city. But yes, the city staff and the council and HEDRA, of course, would have the ability to review any of the plans that are being submitted to the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I've mentioned many times that this isn't my day job. So a lot of this stuff, over the last few years, I'm learning it. So I spent quite a bit of my day today finding out and understanding the tax increment financing piece and what it's used for, when it's used, where it's used. And I guess my question is, does this particular spot of land fit the necessary criteria that would label it for us to establish it as a TIF? I'm seeing a lot of things in, in my reviewing that talk about an area designated as blighted and substandard.
Sure.
I'm seeing maybe the building on Eighteenth and Vermillion as eligible for a, as a TIF area. I'm curious to know if a vacant piece of land in what would appear to be a really good spot to build something, how do we fit the criteria to TIF here?
Sure. So there are a number of different types of TIF districts. So the one that we're considering this evening is a housing district. But some of the information that you were likely reading about in terms of blighted facilities, et cetera, likely would fall under a redevelopment district or an area that is set for revitalization. And those have different criteria as far as what needs to be existing on the site prior to being able to establish a district. In this case, because we're looking at housing, there are no criteria as far as current structures on the, on the site that need to be removed, et cetera. You simply have a vacant lot and a developer that is interested in putting affordable senior housing there.
Excellent, that answers my question perfectly. Then going forward with that question, we are able then to TIF another area for the other purpose? Blighted, those are two separate TIF?
Absolutely. Yes, if you did have an application before you from someone looking to redevelop an area, that would just be a different type of district.
Okay, thank you so much.
You bet.
Councilmember Vaughn.
First, I'd like to defer to our legal counsel. Do we have to do the public hearing before we make more comments? Or, or can I ask a question on the?
Councilmember, I think you're fine to ask questions of the consultant, and I think you can do that now. Obviously, we need to get to the public hearing at some point in time, but I think that's okay.
Then, Your Honor, I got a quick question for Jessica that came up since then. You had mentioned, roll playing it out, roughly, let's say, three million dollars in this tax district number eight. That's the black line on the picture that you had. If the project only takes one point five million, whatever it is, there's some potential left, or we could stop the TIF at that time, saying, take the taxes, put them back on, the tax rolls. Can we restart it? If we say, let's pause, we're done with this project, or you also mentioned that we can continue this tax dollars and use for housing in, throughout the community somewhere else. It doesn't have to be inside this black box. We have the option. My biggest question is, what if we just push pause from fifteen, whatever the development agreement comes with? Can we restart it again, or are we going to call it quits at that time? And it's a good funding tool for housing in the community. I like, that's why I like the TIF concept in this situation, but for. Otherwise, I'm not a big fan of TIF. That's why I just want to clarify what we can do with those dollars.
Once the district is decertified, so your pause, if you've decided that we are no longer going to collect increment from this particular development, I think you're done, unless there is additional development on that site. Because as we've talked about, it's the increment that's generated from the new development. So once that's decertified, I think you're kind of locked out there. And to get at your other question, when we talked about at HEDRA, the potential of, you know, if it's fifteen years is what's granted to the developer, yes, you could absolutely continue to receive that increment. And if you had other eligible housing projects, so affordable housing projects, you could continue to collect that increment from the district, pool that, and use it for additional housing projects. So you do have some flexibility, and that's why when we were drafting the plan, even though we anticipate the duration being less, we wanted to give you the flexibility potentially to support other projects.
And, Your Honor, one follow-up then, just to clarify, that we can potentially, I just want to clarify TIF because I get a little nervous about tax increment financing. I do like that we can, that, for the record, that the schools are not as affected as everybody else. It sounds like the CDA, though, the county, is kind of the authority to determine if it's eligible for housing TIF. Is that correct?
The low-income housing tax credits, which would be another funding mechanism for this particular project. So depending on what the CDA decides to do with their allocation, if it essentially, if it comes together the way that we hope it will, the way that the application is written to the city, as we talked about at HEDRA, we had anticipated the ten to fifteen years in terms of range of support for this project. But until we know what the CDA is going to do, we're just not sure what that funding mix looks like.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not sure, Jessica, if you know this, but when, when was the last time that the city entered into a TIF?
That, I do, fifteen? I would, yeah, twenty fifteen?
Prior to that, significantly earlier, right? We don't have a long history of it.
This is number eight.
This is number eight, yep. So.
Ever history.
And Rusty just said the one prior to twenty fifteen was in twenty-ten.
Okay. I think that's important to take into consideration. Councilmember Vaughn, rightfully so, is, is walking into this carefully because it sounds good. Why wouldn't you do it all the time, make everything a TIF? Well, there's good reason for that because we need money now, too. So there's, there's, there's a balance here, and it needs to be really justifiable. This does seem to be ripe for the opportunity, but we've got to be careful. We can't, I just, I look at all of us here, and I want to make sure we're not using this as our first venture into constant application acceptance of TIF. We need to be very mindful of taxpayers right now that are going to bear the burden of any increasing needs that the city has. And if we lock into twenty-six years of things here and there and there, pretty soon, we're, we're really going to be in a tight spot. I don't think that's going to happen with this. I mean, this is one, one thing, but I just want to point that out as, as we look at this as a strategy to, to, again, make possible something that we all know there's a need for in the community. So a little bit of that.
Okay. All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, you can come to the podium and state your name and your address. Anyone wish to speak during the public hearing? Okay. I will close the public hearing. Counsel discussion? Any counsel discussion? Any council discussion? All right. So council, I would accept a motion to adopt a resolution approving modification of Vermillion Street redevelopment area, the project area, the establishment of Tax Increment Financing District Number Eight, the TIF district. Within the project area, the adoption of a modified redevelopment plan for the project area, and the adoption of tax increment financing plan relating to the TIF district. Counselor Member Lund? And Counselor Member Brockes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prevails. Council, I will now accept a motion to adopt a resolution. Oh, sorry.
Okay. Mayor and City Council, I'll move on to the next actions related to Schoolhouse Square here, now that we've concluded the TIF discussion. And now we're on to some of the land use discussion for this. We're down to the second portion here. The project we're looking at is the Schoolhouse Square site, and we're looking at the following approvals of this. We're looking at a preliminary and final plat, which would be the plating of two outlots into a single lot of record, a pretty simple plat there. Special use permit that is necessary for the construction of any building exceeding 40 feet within the residential mixed-use district, that's the area in which this property is zoned, and then also a site plan application, which would be for the construction of the 90-unit building itself, the affordable senior housing building. And so those are the actions that we have before you tonight. A little bit of background information on the site. The Schoolhouse Square development began in 2002 as an overall master plan of how this whole block would develop itself. As you probably recall, this was the, the home of the former Hastings High School, Hastings Middle School, that was torn down in the early 2000s, and then this project derived after that. It was always intended to be a mixed-use project, which included commercial towards the west end of the development, townhome developments towards the east end here, which are constructed, and then there's two pieces that have not been constructed to this point. That would include this property here, as well as this property down here as well. These would be combined together and would be used as the 90-unit senior housing building. Within the development plan itself, there, there was brought forward that there may be changes to this over time, but there was some parameters that were set forward on the detailed design and density of that site. Now, I'll get into that later in the discussion as we see here. The property itself, I think, as you all know, this is Highway 61 Vermillion Street to the west, this is 10th Street here to the south, Premier Bank Building and the Green Mill Restaurant Building are located in this location here. These applications were brought forward before the Planning Commission at the February 10th meeting. During that, there was a public hearing that was held. We had five or 10 people speak during the public hearing. Some of the comments that were brought up there related to this project being larger than what was originally planned, concerns of traffic, driveway access, rental rates of units, future status of as a senior facility over time, parking, ability to incorporate electrical vehicle charging, lighting, landscaping, height of building, stormwater runoff. That's kind of a summary of what we heard during the course of testimony here. Commissioners also discussed these issues as they went forward. They did recommend approval of the three actions coming before you tonight. Also, we did have a discussion before the Park and Recreation Board on February 11th. They recommended payment of cash in lieu of land to satisfy park dedication requirements as well. Part of the discussion that we had at the Planning Commission meeting revolved around traffic impact for the site. There was a traffic impact study that was conducted by SPAC Consulting on behalf of the developer last fall that we did share with the council. Summary of that study and their conclusions, they concluded that the adjacent intersections are not forecast to be significantly impacted due to traffic generated by the development. What they see is about 335 new trips per day coming from, from this development. At the PM peak, that would be about 25 trips. What they see is the most highly impacted area would be at 10th and Vermillion Street. At that location, you'd see an additional about five vehicles an hour during peak period, or an additional one every 12 minutes. So that was generally the summary of their traffic impact report, and that's included within your packet. So I'll go through each of these individually here, as far as the actions that we're looking at. This is the site itself. Development of the 90-unit senior building would be located like so. It would be four stories as it faces to the west. The existing site drops down about 10 feet to the east, so it would expose an underground garage at this location. The view from the east would be five stories. You can see some other areas here that are part of the site, trail access that would lead up to the north, a private sidewalk here, and then a proposed dog park down here to the south for the use of their residents. So the first thing we have on here is pretty simple. That's the preliminary and final plat. Essentially, we've got two lots here, Outlot A and Outlot B. They now become one lot, Lot One. This has no streets, has no public improvements within it. It's very simple from a plating standpoint itself. As far as the requirements that we have in there, there are really more payments of fees that are, that come with a plat itself, and that would be the park dedication and the sewer interceptor fee payments that would be part of this itself. We would also have some easement agreements that would be on this for stormwater maintenance for emergency situations as well. So on the plat side of it, very simple from that standpoint. When we take a look at the special use permit for height, I, I think it's good to look at the perspective of what we've looked at previously. As I mentioned, in 2002, in the Schoolhouse Square building, we gave approval to the concept plan for the development, which has been changing over time. In 2006, the City Council granted approval of a condo building on this site that would have been 58 units itself. The units were larger than what is being proposed with the senior housing development, but I wanted to do some comparisons about what this project would have looked like in 2006 compared to what we're looking at today. So on the left here, I have the 2006 approval that was granted. That's, that's in blue here. And you take a look over here, this is the proposal today. Some areas of perspective, this is the end of the townhome areas right here. This is it over to the west. So the size of the building and the footprint is very similar, albeit the building shape is a little bit different as you look between 2006 and 20. Although the units within this building are more, the size of the building itself, from a footprint standpoint, very similar in size. When you take a look at the outside and the views, this is the view to the west with the 2020 proposal here and the 2006 approval here. The height of the building that we have today is about, I think, 47 feet, 40, I've got it written down here, 45 feet on the west end of the building. When you take a look at this, I, I could not scale off what the height would be, but just generally looking that both of these were four-story buildings, and this one had a hip, a hip roof on it, that this, the difference between the top of this building here and the hip roof is probably another at least 20 feet. So we're looking at a scale here that would have been much higher than what we would have had with the 2006 approval. This is what it would look like from the east side. This is from the townhome side of the development. As you see, this is more of a five-story building as you look down here with the exposed parking today. That's at about 55, 53, 54 feet, I believe. When you take a look at 2006, a similar type of grading where you have the exposed parking down here. And it looks, frankly, there was, there was a larger area of exposure as you go down to the east here. This looks much taller on this end than it looked over on this end here. And then you have the roof on top with the hip roof, making it a much taller, more massive building with the 2006 approval versus the 2020 approval. So when we take a look at the special use permit for height, what we're looking at is a few different areas. We're looking at impacts to certain items under special use permit. We're looking at impacts to ingress and egress and loading, which we've looked at in the site plan and we're comfortable with. Utility access on the screening and buffering of the site. You do have townhomes in close proximity. There's no question about that. With the Schoolhouse Square development, there was always planned to be development of at least a three- to four-story building at this location. The development of these townhouses over here are directed mostly towards Ramsey Street. The back of the buildings that you see here are garages, albeit there are some windows that do face in this direction. The majority of, of the porch space and views are focused more to the east towards Ramsey Street on it. When you take a look at areas outside of the townhomes adjacent to it, you do have some single-family homes more to the north here. The building positioning is quite similar to what was proposed, and there's a step down at this point to three stories here because of a rooftop deck that is being proposed, and these properties here are currently owned by Camagran, which is the developer of the rest of the subdivision down here. So based upon that, we are recommending approval of the special use permit for height on this property. Taking a look at the site plan aspect to it, we, the building setbacks that we've looked at are acceptable to it. On the pedestrian access side, there's a couple of things that will be added, a private connection here to 8th Street with a stairway that'll provide a seasonal connection to 8th and Sibley, be closed during the wintertime because of the stairs, and then another connection that'll be going west from the site onto existing sidewalk systems to provide access through Schoolhouse Square and a crossing at 10th and Vermillion Street. When we take a look at parking for the site itself, parking is adequate. We're only required one unit, one parking space per unit. They are providing an excess of that. And in fact, when the Planning Commission looked at this in a workshop in January, they had originally shown some parking area down here where this dog run was. Upon the Planning Commission's suggestion that the, the site was overparked, they added this as green space instead with the possibility that they could put in more parking if needed as a proof of parking some point in the future. On the architectural design of this development here, this is a pictures of what it will look like. It certainly meets our architectural requirements of it. It mimics some of the features that you see within the development itself. You can kind of see an example here of the scale of the building here from 10th Street, looking at the building, looking at the existing townhomes. The Green Mill Building, Premier Bank Building are located over here. Those buildings are, the Premier Bank Building is three stories in height, albeit it does have a, I think, a substantially larger first floor on it, so the, the scale of that is gonna be, I think, slightly, this will be slightly higher than that building, but I don't think significantly higher than when we look at this. And we, we are recommending approval of these three actions. We do have three separate resolutions for these. With the resolutions for approval, they require the preliminary and final plat, and site plan resolutions require a simple majority of council. The special use permit does require six of seven council members for passage on that. So again, three separate resolutions, those are the voting requirements behind there. The developer of the property is present here tonight, too, if you have any questions for him and his development team. Also, he's gonna provide a brief presentation as, as well to, to show you a little bit more detail on the site. So I'll call Alex Bazanz up here. Thank you. Let's go back to here.
Hello, Mayor and Council Members. I'm Alex Bazanz. I'm a development partner with Real Estate Equities. Thank you for having me here. I'm gonna give a brief presentation, kind of showing a little more detail and perspective on our plans for the project. So with that, I'll begin here. This first slide is an aerial that you're all very familiar with. This is just some of the exceptional access to services amenities that we like due to the, with the site. One of the things that's important with housing like this is proximity to major interstates and highways. Highway 61 in close proximity is very important, as well as the close access to Highway 55. In addition, some of the shopping parks, other amenities in the area, et cetera, with the Hastings Art Center, the roadside park, and the Hastings Golf Club are all positive amenities for the site and its location. This is, again, a little more than what, a little more of what you just saw. This is the aerial view of the site with the site plan layout of the building. Again, there's gonna be new landscaping and connections to the surrounding community. John just kind of went more into detail on some of that stuff. The unit mix, it's a total of 90 units. We have 63 one-bed, one-bath units, 27 two-bed, two-bath units. The parking ratio for the project is 1.27. There's 114 total parking stalls for the project. 61 of those stalls are underground beneath the building, and 53 of those stalls are also surface stalls. Some of the sustainable elements about our project, we built, we're gonna build this building to the Minnesota Green Community standards. We're gonna have things such as low-flow water fixtures throughout the building. We're gonna have Energy Star appliances in all of the units and common areas where there's, where there's appliances, and also high-efficiency HVAC systems throughout the Unit finishes, so this is two photos that are examples of other workforce housing projects that we've done recently. Press House is the redevelopment of the St. Paul Pioneer Press Building in downtown St. Paul. That's 144 workforce housing units. And then Eastgate Apartments is 135 units in Rochester that are also workforce housing units. These finishes are, are very good examples of the, of the quality of the product that we do, and of the finish levels that you'll see in the units of this building. Common area finishes, this again is an example. This is Press House. This is the party room at Press House. This shows you, again, an example of the finish levels that we do in our common areas with hard-surface countertops, stainless steel appliances, high-quality cabinetry, all the things that, you know, are truly Class A finishes throughout buildings. 90 senior apartments, an important affordable housing resource for the citizens of Hastings. I just want to go over a few quick bullet points here. The apartment rents in the building are gonna be at the 50% to 60% area median income level, which provides about a 10% to 20% savings to tenants in comparison to other new market-rate properties in the area. Again, we think it's an exceptional location with access to transportation and surrounding Twin Cities amenities. It's gonna be an excellent quality housing project totaling a $20 million investment that the, the city and the citizens of Hastings can be proud of, and we think it's the best use for the land, which is obviously why we're interested in. This slide just gives you a little more context of some of the overwhelming demand for this product type, so I'm gonna go through these as well. The Met Council has determined the allocation of affordable housing units needed within the city of Hastings between 2021 and 2030 is 360 units. Nova Graddick, who does market studies throughout the country for this product type, you know, has indicated the vacancy rate has stayed steady at 3.1%, which is considered a very low vacancy with a lot of demand. The capture rate that Nova Graddick's market study indicated was a 5.1% capture rate within Dakota County. This is, this is a very strong capture rate. That basically says that of all of the qualified households that will meet the income levels for this product, for this, for this development, we need to capture 5.1% of that. So that's actually a very strong statistic, a compelling statistic for showing the demand for this product type. And this is kind of a general statistic here, but Dakota County's rental housing inventory is comprised of 95.6% market-rate housing and 4.4% affordable housing. Obviously, a large disparity between market rate and affordable. Some of the additional benefits to the city of Hastings, again, this project will provide the opportunity for a new and vibrant community within the city. This is going to be a new construction option for affordable housing for seniors within the community with Class A finishes that doesn't frankly exist in the community today. Marquette Advisors, who also does similar statistical reports that I was just kind of going through, also estimates that there's gonna be an increase of $1.8 million in consumer spending within the city of Hastings. I think this is important, particularly for the retail nearby and so the local businesses to have additional consumer spending in the area. This development overview again shows a couple of the different renderings of the project. I'm just gonna kind of quickly go through some of the unit amenities and community amenities. In the units, high-quality cabinetry, hard-surface countertops, stainless steel appliances, in-unit washer and dryer, vinyl plank, luxury flooring. There's also nine-foot ceiling heights throughout the building. The community amenities, we're gonna have a rooftop community patio that's actually gonna be facing the river with a heck of a view, a fitness center, a community room, as well as, again, underground parking. And another important statistic or fact, I think, is that, just to explain that, we're gonna own and operate this building for a minimum of 20 years. So we're long-term owners, managers, that take pride in, in the long-term management of these assets. So I think that's an important fact to mention as well. And with that, I'm gonna leave it up to any questions you have for me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Member Fults? We can take questions.
Thank you. I'm sorry, it's Sean?
No, it's Alex.
Alex.
Alex Bazanz.
Oh, there, sorry, I got it. Okay, Alex. Thank you, Alex. I mean, it does look like it's going to be a beautiful facility. When I was at the Planning Commission last week, I had asked a question about the underground park. When I was at the Planning Commission last week, I had asked a question about the underground parking. And I know I, it was, I kind of caught you off-guard, and I caught your architect later in the hall. And I was, you know, interested in having the parking garage electric vehicle charging station ready.
Yeah.
And so did you have an opportunity to kind of solidify what your thoughts were on that?
Yeah, we actually have. So we talked through that. What we can do is provide the infrastructure for electric cars throughout the building. So kind of the metric we discussed is around 3% of the parking areas to have the infrastructure ability to have that electrical parking requirement.
At a minimum, yeah.
At a minimum. So we're definitely supportive of doing that and are willing to do that.
Okay, terrific. Would you be, would you object to that being a condition of approval?
No, no, we would absolutely accept that.
Okay, terrific. The next question I had was in regards to the underground parking, where it is that it comes into the building.
Yeah.
When I was looking more closely at the original documents that were approved in 2002, and then in particular in 2006, there, John had used one of the diagrams that he had put up there. He had showed the difference between 2006 and today. And that 2006 diagram is the reciprocal easement, maintenance, and operating agreement that is in place currently with the Townhome Association there on school, on the Schoolhouse Square block. And so if we were to bring up that, John, could you help me, dear?
What do you?
Could you please go back to the diagram that you had shown? You had a side-by-side comparison between 2006 and today's rendering of their, yep, go back.
This one?
Nope.
Or this one?
That one.
Okay.
The residents are particularly concerned on that driveway that comes from Ramsey into the area. Now, if you look at the 2006 original rendering, you'll see there that the underground parking access came in on the northernmost entrance of the building there. And today, what you're proposing is about a third of the way down currently. And I am fully in favor of keeping the access to that underground driveway as north as possible to minimize traffic that would be coming on the backside of those townhomes. The original rendering was a quick end to the parking area and then back out. And so not only does that reduce, you know, congestion within, you know, the area between the townhomes and the actual facility, but then in addition during the evening, that would substantially cut down the amount of, you know, headlights that would be shining into the backsides of all these homes because it would be at ground level to them. And so I would, I don't know where, you know, if you're at 80% design or, you know, what it is you're at, but I would really appreciate it if you were to move the access into that building so that it was more congenial to the, to the Townhome Association. And then secondly, the, if you do look at that reciprocal easement, easement, maintenance, and operating agreement, again, I know that this isn't between the city, this is between the developer or the owner and the Townhome Association, and you would also have to agree to one of these things. I would like to see this be a condition before we move forward with final approval because I think that it's fair that the Townhome Association have the ability to negotiate with you before the city council has final approval so that they are in some sort of position of equal and fair negotiation. If you look at what this reciprocal agreement currently says, the Townhome Association is responsible for 30% of the private driveway area that goes, you know, around the facility. And that was actually calculated on the fact that the original complex was only supposed to be 58 units. And so, so when you, you know, did the math, it came up to be about 30%. But if you're increasing the number of units to 90, and then they only have 12, you know, when I do the math, that's only like 88%, let's just say 10% of the responsibility. And so I think that it's imperative that the, that that agreement be renegotiated with the homeowners of Schoolhouse Square Townhouse. So if you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, yeah. So I actually had a conversation today with Sonia Metzger, who's the chair of the Townhome Association. We kind of thought through this morning, you know, what we think would be a reasonable agreement. Obviously, you know, these easement agreements are generally kind of finalized towards a closing on a project. That's typically the process that we've gone through on these projects. This is kind of a unique situation because there's existing agreements in place, and it's kind of the center of a development that's been established with existing agreements. So what we came up with, which we think is frankly very favorable for the Townhome Association, is that we will basically take on all the responsibility of that shared roadway and of the access point off of, off of the street, off of Ramsey, to, to basically be our sole cause. So any repair work, any maintenance work that's required to that roadway, any maintenance or repairs that are required to that entryway, we'll take that on. So that will no longer be a financial responsibility of the Townhome Association. We will also maintain it. So they will still be responsible for maintaining, obviously, their garage entryways and their walkways, but we will, we will take that on. So we felt like that was a pretty reasonable concession, you know. So our hope was frankly that that concession was a strong enough concession that we could get approval without having, that finalized agreement is a condition of approval. That would be ideal. I think, you know, in the spirit of moving things forward, I think we could be open to having, you know, that as a condition of approval.
The finalized?
The finalized agreement, yeah. And I was telling Sonia, I mean, we obviously want to be good neighbors, and we want to work with the townhomes, and we want the final outcome of this project to be really good for them and to be great for the community. And the last thing that we want is to start off on a bad footing, you know, with you all. So we want to reach a final agreement with them that's good for them, and that's good for the project. So, yeah, we're, we're okay with that. So on the access discussion, I just, you know, that's the first that's come up. You know, I have our, our civil engineer is here, actually, PJ, and our architect Dave with Cass Wilson's here. I might have PJ come up because he knows a lot more about the site topography and the grade and everything. So.
Hi, my name's PJ, with Ochs, civil engineer in the project. The reason we have the driveway where it's at is because of the grade elevation between, between the west part of the site and east part of the site. Right now, there's currently 10, 10 feet or so grade drop. And we're showing the garage at this current location. We're actually coming down our driveway out of our garage at a 5%, 6%. And as you move farther to the north, the grade's dropping even more. There, at the corner here, there's, there's another five feet, five feet even further down. So for us to get that to work, our drive, I mean, we couldn't get a driveway into our garage grade-wise because it keeps dropping down. Typical lower-level garage. So if you want to look at this, I think on the elevations, this side here is basically the garage. Majority of the garage is going to be exposed where this side is just, the garage will not be exposed, it'll be at first level.
Yep.
Moving the garage farther here is increasing the height of our driveway. The steepness of our driveway is just going to be getting too steep coming, we're going down. We're not coming up into the garage, we're going down from the garage to the street as the current access road between, along the property here is about 6%. So we keep dropping down. Ideally, we'd ideally, for us, would move the garage even farther south to get it to either come level into the garage, so we're not going up into the garage. And going farther north, just grades do not work to, we'd be burying, to get the grades to work, we'd have to bury the building on the west side. So it's, it's a grade issue is why we're, where we're showing the garage where it's at. The previous project here, they did have, the way the building was angled and stuff, they had the access here. They had more of an access, an area to get down where the way our building's configured, there's just not the drive distance to drop the grade down.
Yeah, I think along that, too. I mean, they were also having a taller elevation on that side as well, as you can see here. With going out of the garage, you can see the difference in the garage elevation between here. Here would be much more substantial, meaning that this building is going to be much taller towards this end under that plan.
That's a good point, Jim.
Okay, so the way, when I was looking at, John, your conditions of approval, you have 12 of them?
For the, for the preliminary and final plat, yes. So the, on each of the actions, the three actions, there's, there's different conditions of approval. And on the, on the preliminary and final plat application, I do have a number six on there which talks about the recording of an easement to ensure ingress and egress between the proposed property Ramsey and Tenth. I had the understanding that one existed on there. From our standpoint, we want to ensure that there's, there's access on this site to the public roadways itself. We also want to ensure that there's maintenance responsibilities of these private roadways are taken care of by some entity on that. And, you know, as far as who takes care of what, we generally leave that to the private owners to work out a system to do it. From our standpoint, we just want some assurances that those will be taken care of and that there will be a perpetual, perpetual access agreement over those properties so people can move back and forth.
So that's, so that number six is in reference to the reciprocal easement, maintenance, and operating agreement? Recording of an easement to ensure, so could we reword it to say something more similar as to the effect like number eight? Where you say execution of a development agreement to memorialize conditions of approval? Could we say something that says execution of a reciprocal easement, maintenance, and operating agreement?
Yeah, councilmember, I don't know if there would be any, any objection on my end of it. I kept the general, the language fairly general intentionally on that in case the naming of the document was, was slightly different. So I used a more generalized term on it, but I don't think there's any objection to using something different on that.
Because then that would mandate that this is negotiate, renegotiated before the final closing of the?
Yeah, councilmember, I don't know if number six would, would mandate a renegotiation of it. What it is is it would provide, as it's written now, it would, it would require the developer to provide proof to the city that, that one exists. The maintenance responsibilities on that would not generally be the purview of the city, but they just have to prove to us that, hey, you've got access across here, and here's how it's being paid for.
Okay, all right. I understand what you're saying, but I would like to see it, the wording changed so that wasn't quite so general, so that it was more of an execution of an agreement. That helps give some assurances as the Townhome Association is moving forward with an agreement negotiations.
There's no motion. There's no motion. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Got it. Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick point on the, what Councilor Foltz was talking about with the agreement with the homeowner association. And I'm going to use some extreme caution with that because we've seen it with other developments in this community. I would rather not have the city get in the middle of a homeowner's association agreement. That, that, I think it's great that the developers and the landlords are here today, just like we've done before with the developer. Listen to these people because it's very important to them that that agreement gets taken. I've taken phone calls on this, too. I think, and it sounds, I appreciate you already met on it because I think that's important for the neighbors to understand that you're willing to be a good partner on that. But we'll get some, we'll hear from that, too. But that's important, but I don't want the city to get us in the middle of a homeowner's association, in my personal opinion. The second question I have, John, is by us making two parcels into one, the green space that they're proposing, can that be developed in the future? Can they say, I don't want a dog park anymore, I'm going to put more density in it? Can they, can they do that?
Sure. Under the, the development agreement that we executed in 2002, and the density that they're proposing here, they could not unless we were to entertain another modification of that agreement. That, that's the follow, the next item coming up here is that. When we did Schoolhouse Square, the development agreement, we capped it, a number of units on the site, I think at 84. 12 have been developed, so they've got 72 left. They're proposing 90, so in order to accommodate this development, that agreement would need to be boosted up 18. Now, with, with that, with that agreement, I lost my train of thought of what I was going to say on that one. I'm sorry, I'll just leave, I'll leave it at that. So I mean, no, I know what I was going to say. The zoning district itself would allow for something much more dense, actually. So the zoning could allow for something more. Within the RMU district, there's not a maximum density, but a minimum density, actually. I think of 12 or 16 units an acre. So under the district itself, yeah, but we've tied ourselves to an agreement that caps density on it.
Okay. My last question for Alex. Alex, you had a quick stat in there about 1.8 million on economics to the community. I know that was, that was done by someone else.
Mm-hmm.
Can you confirm, is that an annual or the life of the 20 years that you own it? What is that economic impact?
So that's, that was done by Marquette Advisors. They're a company that does at least regional, maybe even national studies and that kind of statistical information. That's an annual consumer spending stat.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a, kind of a cornucopia of questions, so I apologize. But just a few things, what, what is the water runoff management plan? I, I thought maybe we'd see a pond since we're now taking a lot of green space and making a lot of hard surface. But then also, a couple here, questions, traffic control modification at Tenth. John, you said five units per hour or whatever it was, peak 25 or what? I can't remember all the numbers exactly, but that doesn't seem like a lot. But that being said, do we foresee any need for any traffic control considerations? Also pedestrian, you know, we, it was brought up, hey, this is a great place to be close to things. Well, I imagine that when the day is nice, they're not, the residents aren't necessarily going to be hopping in their car, going out of the garage to go over to Dairy Queen or whatever, they may walk. So just some questions there, what, you know, what has been thought about there? Are we, and then path maintenance as well. I know we talked about the roadway being taken care of, that path, that's also their responsibility. So those are three questions I have.
Okay, let's see, on the, on the, let's start with the last one here. On the path maintenance itself, these would be private sidewalks, and so they would be, they would not be the maintenance responsibility of the city. Let me go back to another drawing here. So when you see the sidewalks on site and their connections, going to the north here, this private sidewalk would lead up to Eighth Street here. If you're familiar with Eighth Street, there's quite a hill between here down to Eighth Street. There would be a stairway connection here. The stairway connection, they've got concerns about winter maintenance and liability, so it would be closed seasonally. But during, you know, summer times and other types of the season, it would provide a connection here directly onto Sibley Street and the sidewalk system there. When you look through the site here, there would also be a sidewalk connection here going on to sidewalks throughout Schoolhouse Square. So there's a sidewalk here on this median. This goes into the Schoolhouse Square development, and then off this page, there's connections down to Tenth and Vermillion Street. So you have connections to some of those other areas of town at that point. On the stormwater end of it, the stormwater is all underground. There's a vault system that is established generally in this location here. You can kind of see it underneath the parking lot. So they are still obliged to follow our stormwater management requirements for volume, rate, and, and quality control on that one. What do we be done through with, with term of vault system underground? Oh, traffic control. Yeah, no, I'm not, yeah, not anticipating any need based upon the traffic analysis for changes, no.
All right. Councilmember Foltz?
Your Honor, I guess I am a little concerned still with, with the sidewalks. I know you had, you know, shown, if you had gone back, that, that there would be a connection that goes over to the backside of the, of the commercial development buildings. But you know, those, yeah, it is hard to get in those doors. I don't know, maybe I'm just going at bad times a day on the weekend or something, but I can never get into those doors. They're locked a lot. Maybe they're just open for, you know, daytime business hours, which are limited. So it is difficult, and I know I've had to walk around that building there because one side of it is the Dunn Brothers driveway, and then the other is the bank driveway. And so it's really not an ideal situation, and I don't have a lot of answers to that. But I do know that it's a problem because I've gotten stuck having to walk in the wrong direction on, in those, those driveway areas. direction in those driveway areas. And so, so all of those pathways, though, that go around the building, those are the responsibility then of the commercial buildings to ensure. I just, I'm just a little concerned that we're going to have senior residents that are going to be walking around these areas, and just to make sure that, I mean, that they are going to be clear and that they are going to be able to get around. It just, I haven't had the best experience myself.
Okay. Yeah, councilmember, as far as the access connections here, you know, they would all be private. I think those follow, that they fall under that reciprocal easement agreement for maintenance responsibilities because that not only takes care of this area here, but other shared areas throughout the site as well. So as far as the, you know, maintenance of that, I might have the developer talk a little bit more to it, but, you know, our thought is, you'd have a connection through here, you've got sidewalk connections on this median, crosswalks identified through here leading to this building, crosswalks down to here to Premier Bank, you can come around the building here, another crosswalk connection near the monument tower sign that goes to 10th and Vermillion Streets. So, you know, we don't want a situation here, encourage a situation of crossing at Sibley and 10th Street just because there's no access control there. You also have the possibility of coming down through here onto Ramsey Street as well through sidewalk systems. As far as maintenance of it, Alex, I don't know if you can address that at all?
Yeah, I mean, we'll obviously be responsible for maintaining all the walkways specific to our overall development project. In terms of the other walkways that kind of navigate through the parking areas that John was referencing, you know, we'll have to work with the owners, with Ken McGarren LLC, with Pat Regan's company, with the LLC that owns that area, to clearly define kind of how those are maintained. And we'll do that. So that's something that we'll take on. If that answers your question from a maintenance standpoint.
I guess, yeah. I just wanted to raise the question that I think that others are concerned about.
Yeah, I mean, that's something, that's, I understand your concern, for sure, about seniors and flipping and falling and things like that. And we'll have to have a maintenance initiative with our staff on site to take on, you know, salting and shoveling and to make sure those walkways are cleared and things of that nature very quickly, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Wasek?
Thank you, Your Honor. Got three concerns, questions here. When art space was built downtown, initially, they said they were going to go with underground parking, and then they discovered the bedrock, and they couldn't do that. So they couldn't do any underground parking, had to end up with surface parking. What's the situation with what's underneath all of this? Do we have bedrock? Have we done soil, borings? Do we know exactly what we've got, so we're not going to end up with something different?
Sure. And I may turn this over to the development team as well, but when the Schoolhouse Square development was originally developed, it was mass rated throughout this area here. And so this hillside area that exists, that 10-foot drop from this side of the site over here, you know, was done at that time. So I'm not anticipating any rock issue underneath there. When you've got the building, the building's going to be basically at ground level through this, exposed, and then be sort of like a walkout in a single-family house towards the west. So I'm not sure if there's anything else to add to that, if you've done any analysis, Alex or PJ?
Yeah, I can take that. So Brian Ertek's done full environmental testing, we've done soil tests on site, we've done a, you know, geotechnical evaluation, and there, I believe there is, there's definitely bedrock on site at a certain depth, I'm not sure exactly what depth, but all the studies found that the site is very suitable for supporting a building that we've designed and that there shouldn't be any issues running into any unforeseen things. So we feel very good about the soil results that we got.
Okay, I just don't want to, I don't want any surprises, for you especially, to come back and say, whoops, you know, now we've got to go higher if we're going to get this parking, you know, underneath. School, or, excuse me, art space was so confident, and then they got in there and, you know, things changed radically as a result of that. Okay, second question, and we don't have the, anybody here from Public Works, do we?
We do not, I don't think, no.
Okay. But perhaps you could answer this, John. Do we have the water, sewer, stormwater capacity to handle 90 units? Are we going to be concerned about all of the residences and the businesses in the area perhaps experiencing a decrease in water pressure? Anything like that?
Sure. Councilmember, yes, we did verify the availability and the capacity of city sewer and water to handle this development here, albeit it's larger than what was originally planned. We've got the capacity to handle it without effects to the current users.
Okay, very good. The last thing, Councilmember Vaughn had touched on, you know, the pitfalls of homeowners' association, and, you know, over the years, we've had members of homeowner associations come before the council and ask, what can we do as a city to get some things enforced, et cetera, et cetera? And I totally agree. We do not want to get into the business of homeowner association. But, again, in our discussions either last week or in committee, what is the city's purview and legal right to oversee this project over its life of, now, you're saying 20 years, but we're talking a 25-year TIF district? So that we maintain affordable housing and not get 10 years from now and somebody says, you know, the developer says, well, we're going to change this and go market rate or something like that? What, what can the city do? And, because I think we can, but I want you to elaborate on it. How does the city ensure that this stays the kind of project that is being presented before us tonight?
Sure. Councilmember, from an affordability standpoint, you know, we have the tie there with the TIF district, that the TIF, payment of TIF district proceeds is incumbent upon having proof that there's rents of a certain level within the building itself. Once that TIF district is done, and that's no longer valid on the site, I'm not aware of any mechanisms that we would have in place right now to ensure that continue over time on that one. There may be items that the developer may wish to put on the property to do that, but as far as from a city standpoint, I'm not aware of anything else we would place on it.
Maybe a question for a city attorney. Could we do anything in terms of like a perpetuity regulation that says this will always be affordable housing?
Councilmember, other than through the TIF district requirements, I don't believe a city has the ability to put covenants on a property, a private property like that, that would ensure low housing rents going on into the future. I don't think we could.
Okay, so for the, for the life of the TIF district, that's as far as our jurisdiction goes with the, with the project, then?
That's my understanding, correct.
So when I want to go and rent a place in 25 years, it may be, may be something other than what it is now. We'll see. Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Another discussion? No? Okay. So council, I would accept a motion. No? Oh, Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to accept this resolution of the City Council of Hastings granting preliminary and final plat approval of the Schoolhouse Square fourth addition as outlined in our materials, but I would like to add a 13th provision that the developer said that he would agree to, in that being that the underground parking will be, at a minimum of 3% of the slots, will be readyed for electric vehicle charging stations?
Yes. Happy to do that, yeah.
Thank you. And then, and John, I'm not, on that number six, if it were to read execution of an easement agreement to ensure ingress and egress between the proposed property Ramsey Street and 10th Street?
Okay. So execution of an easement to ensure ingress and egress?
Execution of an easement agreement.
Yep.
To ensure ingress and egress.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Okay. I'll need a second for that motion. No second? Okay. So then, council, I'll need a motion. Accept a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hastings granting preliminary and final plat approval of the Schoolhouse Square four addition. So moved. Councilmember Vaughn and Councilmember Brooks, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oops. Sorry, council discussion, sorry. Council discussion?
Clarification for staff here, so is this the intention of the resolution to adopt what is within the packet with no changes? Okay, thank you.
Okay, council discussion? Okay, all those in, Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm not entirely understanding why the council would not be supportive of the Town Home Association and the developer having an agreement as a condition of the approval, as there are several other executions of agreements that are mentioned in this, and it's just clarifying the recording of an easement. So I'd just like to ask the question if somebody would please answer that.
Thank you, Your Honor. It was a multi-pronged amendment, so perhaps if that was the most important, you could suggest an amendment to the motion with just that, with further clarification of what you're looking for as well.
Are you, council, are you asking if the motion could be amended? It could be at this point in time, if there would be a motion to amend the main motion, and if there is a second of the motion to amend, then the council would deliberate on that, and it could vote on that. And if the motion to amend is approved, that would amend the main motion, and then the main motion would be voted on. So any member could bring a motion to amend the main motion at this point in time.
Okay, well, Your Honor, may I?
Yes. Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, okay, help me, Dan, if I get this wrong. I'd like to make a motion to modify item number six to read, rather than recording of an easement, to read execution of an easement agreement to ensure ingress and egress.
Motion to amend, and there would have to be a second to that.
Is there a second, council?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure, Councilmember Foltz? Councilmember Leifert, clarification question?
Thank you, Your Honor. Clarifying question?
Can I speak quickly? Thank you. I just, I was just notified, there's already, so there's already a cross-easement in place, so having, having that be a condition of closing, of a final approval, could be problematic. Again, in good faith, we're 100% willing to work with the Town Home Association. We will work with them, we will create a very fair and practical agreement with them, and we've already taken on the responsibility of 100% of the roadway repairs and maintenance. In good faith, we will work with them. So I just was notified of this. So I don't personally want that to be a condition of final approval.
Your Honor, I think you should clarify, you've got a pending motion to amend here. I think you should call for a second and see if you get that, so we're procedurally, we're solid there.
Could I have a second to that motion that's on the table? No second? Councilmember Lund, second? Discussion?
Discussion?
Discussion? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do want to hear from the homeowner association that we have here tonight, that it sounds like she would like to talk about it, but I want to remind us, this is getting us into that word, the homeowners' association in this agreement, in my opinion, by offering that, and that's what I don't support. But I'd like to hear from the homeowner association, please.
Step to the podium, please. State your name and address.
My name is Sonia Metzger. I'm president of the homeowners' association. I'm, the man sitting next to me is also a resident. We have not had time to really prepare for this. I just got the documentation regarding this development last week, and then I got the agreement this week that states that we have to share the road with the developer. This up above here, we own 50% of that road, this piece, and we own 100% of that little jut out to Ramsey Street. So we have a huge concern about who's going to take care of that road, the maintenance, snow removal, all those, we've been doing that, snow removal. And now with the new 90-unit building going in there, you know, the roads are going to need a lot more upkeep, and we were worried about the expenses. And I appreciate what you were doing for us. I would like this tabled until we can hire an attorney so that we can negotiate this with the developer, you know, as far as expenses and what we share. I need to have counsel available to discuss it. This is all within the last week and a half I find out about this.
Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Sonia. And so, councilmembers, I just want you to know, this is why I'm bringing it forward, because it did happen really fast. I was super surprised to see it on our council agenda for today, and just, and like she said, it was just before the planning commission last week, and the homeowners' association folks, they didn't even have full access to the packet. I mean, they knew that the meeting was happening, but they didn't know about all the information that was on the website, and so I sympathize with them, just that they're trying to, you know, catch up as quickly as possible. And so that's why I didn't want to table the approval of this project, because I know how important it is to our community, but rather to ensure that, that there would be negotiations and that the Town Home Association wasn't kind of, you know, left in a position of not having, basically being powerless, that they would, you know, that they would be bound to an agreement that was signed in 2006. And so, hence, I was just trying to do my job as a councilmember, looking out for the Town Home Association, and Sonia has been right on top of this and doing everything that she can to get herself prepared. And so with that, now, I just, thank you, Sonia. I wanted the group to understand why it is that I was asking for that bit, and I guess I don't know well enough what the legalese are to things if, if an agreement is already in place, but that's what I was kind of afraid of, is that the Town Home Association would just inherit the agreement that was, you know... know, agreed to in 2006 and be bound to that, and that there's no reassurances that anything would be renegotiated.
The agreement states right now that, and I'm not real good at explaining this, but this is my understanding of it, that we own 30%, or are responsible for 30% of the road, the maintenance, the snow removal, everything, and that anybody who develops that lot, this developer would be responsible for 60% of it, and Pat Regan's investment group is responsible for the other 10, and that was based on when the development, those percentages were based on when that development was going to be 58 units, now it's 90 units, and if this goes forward before we have an agreement, that puts us at risk, and I did talk to the developer today for the first time about this, so they haven't worked with us before this, it's like we didn't exist. They've got all this prepared, and they haven't approached us about it, and I came across an email where their attorneys had advised them that they need to address that with us.
Thank you. Counsel, any other discussion?
Your honor.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, your honor. Councilmember Vaughn makes a good point in regards to us not getting in, we had something come up earlier, late last year, between an association and a developer, but this is concerning to me in the fact that if we're going off of, was this the 2006 agreement? So it was 2002, that got amended in 2006 when we, when the council approved the 58 units, and then that didn't get built, so they made an agreement with your association at that time.
Yeah.
I do feel that this isn't, it could be a financial burden to the 12 units that are there, because absolutely traffic-wise, 58 units as opposed to 90 units generally will generate more traffic, causing more wear and tear on your road, higher maintenance, so I do feel that, and I don't know what the process is for this, I feel that that is something that needs to be taken care of, or might be, we might have the cart before the horse here.
Yes.
And now, hearing that, that is significant, and I wouldn't want that financial burden to just have us say, oh, well, they'll figure it out on their own later, I don't know that that's fair, considering there have been two previous agreements. A third one should be made to modify with this existing plan that's before us. So do you know, Sonia, it sounds like you've been there this whole time?
Yes.
In 2002 and 2006, those, well, 2006, was that agreement discussed and made with you prior to the city council's approval?
I moved in in 2004, and I knew that there was going to be some sort of senior housing built there at some time, so that we didn't, I didn't have an issue with, everybody knew that, who bought there, I believe, and that fell through, then in 2006, the one who did the townhomes, the developer of the townhomes, came into an agreement with Pat Regan, I believe, we were not, I was not aware of that agreement, I never had a copy of it, I just saw it this week, yesterday.
Counselmember Lund.
Thank you, your honor. Sonia, thank you. You want, want the opportunity to have counsel, can you, can you lay out exactly what the, just, for clarity's sake, what the items are that you would be looking to discuss? As you're asking us to table so that you have the opportunity to speak with counsel, can you please lay that out so everybody's understanding what the items that you would be bringing forward in negotiation?
Well, we own this property with, with the developers and the investment group, so we have an interest in this property. We are putting ourselves at risk to take over any type of maintenance or repairs or snow removal, you know, financially, 12 units. The developer did call me today and tell me that he would take it over, but I can't make that decision, I need an attorney to make that decision, to look at the wording, to, I'm no lawyer, and I am responsible for making sure that this is, this works out for the 12 people who live there and own these properties. I need an attorney.
Counselmember Vaughn.
Thank you, your honor. Sonia, I get where you're coming from, but I think what I heard tonight from a developer on public record, that they just said they'll take over 100% of the maintenance of that road, I get it, I'm not an attorney either, but they're here, and I heard it publicly that they're going to take over 100% of it, so that satisfies me that we don't have to get in the middle of a homeowners association and development. You get pretty good record here today to say, they already said they're going to take care of it. You also say, you own 50% or 30%, I can't figure that out.
Yeah.
You got that list, so when it is time to get your new agreement with them, they can't take it from you, you got it. So I think, that's why I don't think we should be delaying this, if anything, we should have then tabled this a long time ago, instead of trying to put it in our agreement, us getting in the middle of a homeowners association agreement with a developer, we're here just looking at the project in general versus just saying, oh, I want to put this stipulation in on here, that's what I'm not agreeing with. I appreciate where you're coming from, but I also say I don't want us as a city to ever get intertwined with homeowners associations.
Thanks, councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Fults, your lights on, is that, are you speaking?
Sorry.
Okay. Counsel, do you mind if Pat Regan speaks?
Okay.
Welcome, Pat.
Pat Regan, Kay McGarren. There are actually three parties to the remo agreement. So when we developed Schoolhouse Square, we had the commercial site, if I could, I could speak to a couple other concerns, the floor of the garage level has already been subgraded, so that's what you see across from the townhomes where the curbs are, that will be about the garage level of the, of the facility. That was subgraded based on the original plans for the building you see there in the There is a remo agreement, it was in place, it was agreed to by, by Kay McGarren, which is me and my family. Schoolhouse Partners is me and my friend Mario Cuccarella, we're 50-50 partners on the, on the residential side of the site, that's been from the beginning, we are the two partners who developed the townhome pads and got the plat approved, put the remo agreement in place between the townhomes and the commercial side of the property, fully anticipating that this kind of a building would be built here, actually the 58-unit building would have had a lot more traffic than a senior-only building is going to have, we, we had more parking, we also had these six more units here that aren't going to be built now apparently. The signers on the remo agreement that the townhome owners here today are subject to and have been subject to since the day they bought their property was John Langenfeld, who developed, who built all of the townhomes, and they were subsequently sold, subject to this remo agreement. It's been in place since before these folks bought their units, because it was placed on the property between us, Schoolhouse Partners, which is the two of us, Mario and myself, and Kay McGarren, which is the commercial part of the property. The reason the doors are locked at night on the east side, unfortunately, is because there's not enough business and not enough activity, and we've had some people sneak into the building in the middle of the night, and we found them sleeping in the morning. So when there's 90 more people leaving here, living here, we've also had to lock the public bathrooms, unfortunately, to secure the property. Hopefully, when there's 90 more people living here, there will be a marketable reason to open the, the doors on the east side of the property. We're looking forward to that. The 1.8 million of extra activity, that's real, we need that at Schoolhouse Square. If you look at the east side of the property today, most of those units are either closed at four or five in the afternoon, or they're now vacant, looking for tenants, so that's what's, why the doors aren't always open late at night, we need more business. So for the Town Home Association, this remo agreement has been in place since 2006, the signers on it are myself, for the commercial property and for Schoolhouse Partners, and John Langenfeld, who built these townhomes to our spec, that we designed for the entire project, so anybody who's, who bought a unit from John Langenfeld, bought it subject to this remo agreement, these good people from, from Real Estate Equities to assume 100% of that, they've actually taken 10% of my responsibility, because the, the townhomes were responsible for 30%, the condo building was responsible for 60, and I remain responsible for 10% on the commercial side, because all of these driveways are open to everybody, that's always been the plan, everybody gets to go everywhere, nobody can block anybody. That was all part of the original design plan and part of the agreement here, that I agree with whoever on the council here says they should not inject themselves into a private agreement, this agreement's in place, it's been in place, these people have offered to take 100% of it, which they don't have to do, but in, in good faith, that will satisfy, more than satisfy those concerns, they've got to build, we, the second lift of the asphalt needs to be done, that'll be done in conjunction with the construction, and that's been admittedly kind of a hassle for us and the townhome people, because we've had these bumps in the road. We improved the areas around the manhole covers and whatnot, and made it plowable, and we plow lots, we plow a lot up and down that, that road, because when it's heavy snow, we have to get it open so people can get everywhere, and my guys plow it, the townhome people have a contract, the, the contract to take care of that, that main road will now go on to the, to the condo building, or the senior building, apparently, so that's, that's a good deal, it's a better deal than they have right now, and to claim they didn't know anything about it is not a fair claim, that's been in place since the day they bought the property. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Pat. Counselmember Balsanic.
Just a clarification, Pat, you had referred to it as a condo building, it is not a condo building, right?
No longer, no, it's a senior, affordable housing.
For the record, yeah, affordable rental housing, very good. Your honor, I call the question, but I would ask for a roll call vote.
Sure. And can council help us?
Your honor, I think the first action before you to vote on would be the First Amendment to the main motion, which as I understand it, would be to accept or change the number six to read "execution of an easement agreement to ensure ingress and egress between the proposed property Ramsey Street and 10th Street," and so that is the motion, I believe that's before you, to amend the main motion.
And if, and if I could add one, one question for consideration on that main motion there, I'm not sure if that's appropriate, Mr. Flegel or not on this, but, okay, in discussions with the developer here, there was some concerns that were expressed earlier about how that language may affect financing, we have a responsibility that evident, that we have evidence of that agreement on the property, so that we can ensure that there is access and maintenance of it. My suggestion, if anybody wanted to pick that up, would be, instead of having the words "recording," because there is an easement on the property, that they provide evidence of an easement to ensure, that, that would be my suggestion on that. I understand that there's a, a standing motion amendment on the floor that may be contrary to that, but I just wanted to bring that up for consideration. Thank you.
Any other comments, council? Counselmember Fults.
Your honor, you know, to be quite honest, I feel a little leery about the motion that I made, just because I don't, I mean, I don't know well enough to know what the impacts are to their financial agreements, and I don't want to, you know, meddle and make things go south on their end, but, but I do want to look out for the Town Home, you know, Association, because I understand their plight, and with that said, you know, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Regan, and I, are you still here, Pat? Where did you go? You're way in the back, hey. You know, Pat, if, if you're, if you're ensuring that you're going to make sure that this gets renegotiated, you know, that's what I'm looking for, because I know that your word is gold, and...
What you saw here tonight is what they're willing to do would give out the condition of this approval between the city and three private parks, that we would not recommend that be rolled.
Well, okay.
The agreement's in place, it's been approved.
Okay. Counselmember Vaughn?
We called the question, I'm waiting for the roll call here.
Okay, Julie, take a roll.
Can I just confirm if you're prepared to vote, or is there a request to take your motion back?
Well, I think I should take, I think the responsible thing to do is to take the motion back.
That would require the moving party and the person who made a second, both consent to that, and then based on the ordinance, the, the motion to amend could be removed.
I agree, yeah. Counselmember.
You made the second?
Yes.
And both of you are in consent to that?
Yes.
So, your honor, I guess I would have you declare that the, the motion has been withdrawn, and you're back to the main motion, which I understand would be to accept the, or approve the preliminary and final plat approval as presented with the resolution.
Okay, the amendment has been...
You're back to the main motion.
We're back to the main motion, which is, I accept a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hastings granting preliminary and final plat approval of Schoolhouse Square IV addition.
As presented.
As presented. Counsel.
Call for the roll, roll call vote.
Oh, Julie.
Yes.
Counselmember Fults?
Yes.
Counselmember Balsanic?
Aye.
Counselmember Brooks?
Yes.
Counselmember Lund?
Yes.
Counselmember Leifeld?
Yes.
Mayor Fassbender?
Yes.
You should clear that motion and approve it, your honor. That motion has been approved. Okay, clearly that, council, I would accept a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hastings granting...
Special use permit approval to construct a building exceeding 40 feet in height within the RMU zoning district for Lot 1, Black 1, Schoolhouse Square IV addition. A motion, councilmember Fults?
Yes.
Counselmember Brooks?
And, your honor, if I could, I'll just, you should call for discussion, but I'm going to remind the council one more time that this is a special use permit that requires six votes for approval.
And any council discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prevails. Okay, then, council, I would now need a motion to adapt, I'm sorry, accept a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hastings granting site plan approval to construct a 90-unit senior apartment building on Lot 1, Black 1, Schoolhouse Square IV addition. A motion I need from, from council, councilmember Leifeld? Councilmember Fults? Any council discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prevails. Motion prevails. One more. Counsel, I would accept a motion... Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I, I'll do, I could do a quick recap, uh, mayor and counsel on, on the last action item on this. I didn't specifically address that during the last portion, but you're being asked to amend the existing development agreement for Schoolhouse Square to allow two things to occur consistent with your approvals. One would be to increase the density, the amount of residential density on the site by eighteen units, which would accommodate the, the proposed ninety-unit building. That, as it sits right now, would prohibit any other development, residential development on the property, additional units. The second would be to amend the section related to height of that building. That building refers to an older building on the original 2002 plan, which was contemplated to be three stories in the front, four stories in the back. So, that, those would be the action items, would be to, to adopt the authorization to sign that development pursuant to those conditions.
Okay. Thanks, John. So, counsel, I would accept a motion to approve the First Amendment to Development Plan Agreement for Schoolhouse Square. Counselmember Vaughn? Counselmember Brax? Any discussion, counsel? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails. Okay. So, John, I think you might be...
Yeah, one, I got one...
Oh, you have one more?
One, one more item, two actions for you related to that one here. Uh, so, what we've got before us today are two actions related to this property here, which is on the, the northeast corner of Lightborne Court and Thirty-First Street East. They're all in reference to construction of a mini-storage facility on the property. One would be a special use permit, which would allow retails and sales service industries within the Industrial Park District. The other would be site plan approval for construction of the facility. The property is within our Hastings Industrial Park and is presently owned by the City of Hastings. You did take a look at a concept plan approval to contemplate sale of the property, and to look at a preliminary concept plan for this property, uh, i- in the past on this one, and now that the site plan is following up on that. Little closer view of the project here, it would be these two lots, which is about two and a half acres. This is what the, what the property looks like today. I'll go back a little bit. So, surrounding it, you, you've got the industrial park all around there. You've got a trail system to the east over here, part of our city trail system, to the kind of east of it, southeast. You do have part of Glendale Heights, some townhome development, and then area outside the town, outside the city to the south of it here. So, that's what we have surrounding the property, what it looks like today, and what they're proposing to do, which looks something like this. Three mini-storage buildings on here, landscaping would go around it. One entrance off of Lightborne Court, no entrances off of Thirty-First Street here, so we, we are approving of the, we've reviewed and approved the access to the property, locations. We've looked, we've discussed this with Public Works and Public, uh, and our fire department to ensure that they're comfortable with the situation here, with what they're proposing from an access and delivery standpoint. This is what the building would look like here. It's got a mixture between, uh, a, a brick substance towards, on the lower elevations here, and something that looks more like, uh, like, like this towards the east of it, which is a board and batten embossed steel siding. So, it's not going to be exposed steel, but have this board and batten look to it itself. So, we work with the developer to try to find something that'd be a little more finished on it, with the understanding you've got elevations with garages, there's not much to do, that you can really do on that end of it, but on the other elevations to, to bring it, bring up the site. The other thing they'll be doing, too, is putting nice fencing along it. This would be along the public furnitures, the, the wrought iron tap fence, and with the chain link fence around other areas of it. So, Planning Commission did review this at the February tenth meeting. Dick re, did recommend approval of both actions. Held a public hearing, we had one resident speak, just asking questions of whether there would be outside storage, which there would not be, and asking about the height of the building. Uh, we had, had no other follow-up on that from there. Uh, with the, with the approval, the Planning Commission did add a couple of conditions. One, that would prohibit outside storage, to make that clear, and the other one would be to ensure that fence height towards the east end. They had, we'd had some discussion along the trail axis here, this probably shows up better in the aerial, that, uh, if you were to, that this trail axis might be in in invitations for, for nuisance to go on back here, so to be able to provide a fence that would offer proper protection from that occurring. So, we have that moving for you tonight. I'm looking around, we do have the developer here as well, if you have any questions for him, and I could stand for any questions as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, John. Counsel? I would accept a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hastings granting special use permit approval for operation of mini-storage, a retail and service business within the I-one industrial district located at 3001 Lightborne Court. Counsel? Counselmember Vaughn?
Your Honor, I make a motion, I just, reminder, it's special use permit, time again, so we need six out of seven votes.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. It's six out of seven.
Special use permit requires six votes to pass.
And Counselmember Leifeld, second? Any addition, counsel discussion? Okay, uh, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails. This is the site related to the special use permit, just approve. Counsel, we don't have to do that today. Okay, counsel discussion? Counsel, I'd accept a motion to adopt a resolution to the City Council of the City of Hastings granting site plan approval for the mini-storage located at 3001 Lightborne Court.
So, move.
Counselmember Lund? And Counselmember Brax? Additional counsel discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Uh, tonight, we have with us, um, Parks Department, Mr., uh, Chris Jenkins. Welcome. Thanks for hanging out.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Uh, mayor and counsel, what we have for you tonight on the agenda, first off, is a brief presentation by Jeff Hafner of Rainbow Tree Care. He's going to discuss the successes of the 2019 Emerald Ashbore Treatment Program that Rainbow Tree Care provided here in Hastings. So, I'll let him provide that.
Great. Thank you, and welcome.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone. Mayor, member of the council, uh, I have just a quick ninety slides, so it shouldn't take too long. Um, my name's Jeff Hafner, I'm the Director of Municipal Consulting at Rainbow Tree Care. We've been the city's preferred vendor for protecting private ash trees within the city. I didn't go into a lot of background on what Emerald Ashbore is. I'm happy to answer any questions. I like to skip over that part and assume an educated audience, but always happy to answer questions throughout. It really is only like twelve slides, so, and that one, this one counts. So, uh, so what I do for cities, I combine the insights from national research on managing Emerald Ashbore, and find ways to implement the strategies in communities. In that, I'd also develop comprehensive plans that include economic models to help develop municipal budgets, and by the second bullet, many people are already walking out of the room. So, I'm used to that part. Um, I also create and implement municipal and homeowner programs to maximize tree protection, uh, which helps reduce pest pressure. So, again, because I didn't go into a lot of Emerald Ashbore background, I don't skip over tree benefits, because I'm very happy to support trees. Trees are very easy to like. Uh, you get very few people coming to the podium to, um, object to trees, in my experience. Uh, because they increase property value, they reduce heating and cooling costs, and larger trees equal bigger benefits. So, the more we can preserve the big trees we have, the better off the communities are, and people find trees to contribute to the livability of a city. So, uh, some background on the program that has been established here in Hastings. The program began in 2017, so we're in the third, we've completed the third year now, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Uh, the program was designed to do three things, really lower the cost of ash tree protection for residents, um, collect the tree inventory data of those protected trees, and then mark each tree with a tag, which indicates the year of treatment. And I have a picture of what one of the tags looks like. We actually have three tags, which indicate who paid for the treatment, so we have a municipal tag, a residential tag, and a commercial tag, depending on who, who paid for the treatment. Now, we don't do any municipal treatments for the City of Hastings, so this tag is a little misleading, because you won't see any of these on the residential trees. You'll see one just like this, that says residential instead. But it includes the year and why it was treated. Uh, as I mentioned, trees, uh, provide a lot of benefits, and I like to kind of break that out, like where those benefits are realized. Um, a nineteen-inch ash tree, which is about this big around at breast height, um, yields about a hundred and seventy-three dollars annually in benefits. So, every year that tree exists, it yields those benefits, and as the tree gets bigger, those benefits increase. And you can see kind of the breakout, stormwater management, property value, as I mentioned before, the heating and cooling costs that are saved, also the CO2 that's pulled out of the atmosphere, and the CO2 that's avoided, because you're not producing it to produce the electricity, and then just an increase in air quality. In 2019, uh, we worked in close conjunction with city staff, with the city communication staff, to communicate the program's benefits to residents. So, here you see a couple of examples of city-led communication through their social media, through your social media avenues. And then, in addition to that, we support communication through, um, postcard mailings, uh, landing pages, uh, included in our website, that help residents just quickly sign up for tree inspections and, uh, sign up for the service. So, then I created a map of where the treatments have taken place over the last three years, and as you zoom out enough to see the whole city, you do kind of lose a little bit of the detail. So, in red, you see the trees that were only protected in 2017. In green, you see the trees that were protected in 2018, and then in blue, all the trees that were protected in 2019. So, this gives you an idea of where residents are utilizing this program throughout the I'm ready for questions whenever you have them. Yeah?
So, Jeff, that's a static image, right? You can't submit on it, it's not dynamic.
It's, it's not dynamic in this presentation, no. Are you looking for your house?
Uh, no, one of my houses.
Oh, I suppose so.
That has been treated by you, which I'm very appreciative of. Um, what's interesting about this map is that Emerald Ashbore actually began in the upper right-hand corner of, um, your, your L map, around, like, is it all there? Yep, that's Kowtum. And, and there's no treatments there. And then, um, and that's, so that's, that's ground zero, and it's been, um, and it's been making its way up, like, so south, why should I say south? From there, down, um, along Highway sixty-one, and I know it's in my neighborhood. I mean, the entire city of Hastings is now considered substantially...
Generally infested.
Generally infested. Thank you for the terminology. Um, so what's interesting is how few treatments have taken place in the worst areas, the most heavily infested areas. I think a lot of that has to do with, um, just socioeconomic factors, where, um, the home values aren't as much, because if, I guarantee, the further west you go, it looks like your, um, your pin mat becomes more dense, and that's where home values begin to, um, increase, you know? And so, I think there's obviously a direct correlation between, um, whether or not someone's treating their ash trees and socioeconomic status, so I just wanted to point that out.
Those are astute observations.
Yep.
So, when we look at those trees protected, sure, don't want to give away my big...
Uh, are you, do you have, in your database of everything that you've treated, do you have a, a, a plan to notify property owners that, okay, it's now time to do your tree again?
We do.
You do? Okay. Because, because you did my tree, and I can't remember if it was one year ago or two years ago. So, anyway, okay.
Should, I would have been well-served to look up everybody's addresses and make sure we had...
Oh, yeah, sure.
...protection. Uh, but yes, we do, that is part of our process, is a renewal reminder.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, so, when we look at, uh, the number of trees that are protected in those three years, you can see that breakout. Uh, now, the treatments are, are warranted for two years. So, uh, any tree that was treated in 2018, we consider, we consider it still under protection in 2019. So, if we focus on, um, just, well, I'm getting ahead of myself. Forget I said anything about that. We'll instead look at the number of trees treated in 2019 in Hastings, per one thousand residents, uh, is actually really high. Now, we have close to thirty of similar-type programs across the Twin Cities metro, and when I look at the average number of trees protected per one thousand residents, you can see our company-wide average is about eleven, uh, and in Hastings, we see that average being, or that number being twenty. So, that's an indication that this program really matches kind of what residents appreciate about their trees, and their willingness to take action to protect them against EAB. And so, what I was saying before is, when we look at trees treated in 2018 still being under protection in 2019, then we can start to look at those two years of participation, and the total eight hundred and sixty-eight trees, and when we sum up all those inches, we get over fifteen thousand inches. So, when we look back at what each of those trees provide in benefit, you can see that annual benefit of over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, those benefits are being provided by that tree that's just there doing its thing. So, it's a great value. Uh, homeowners appreciate it, they're participating at really high numbers, and the entire community is really benefiting from it. So, thanks.
Counselmember Fults?
Your Honor, thank you, Jeff. Um, yeah, I, I think that rate is so high, is when I was out door knocking, every door I stopped at, and I saw an ash tree in their front yard, I was like, "Did you know that's an ash tree?"
We appreciate that.
Here's what you need to do. Um, but, uh, on, on a serious note, um, I've seen in the past, when you've done, um, economic models that show the impact of, um, EAB, and, um, something that I am really curious to see is, um, the creation of an economic model considering all of the city-owned property and the volume of trees that we have. Um, the city has only been treating, um, trees that are with, on, you know, with, within city property, like, and in the parks, that are, um, of higher value, that they wanted to be retained, um, and, and we're not treating the trees that are in the right-of-way. And it's been, um, and it's been made the, the responsibility of the homeowners to have those trees, um, treated, and if not, the, um, the resident is fully responsible for the, uh, removal of the tree when it dies, and, uh, and its replacement. And so, um, I would be very interested in, in seeing that economic data that shows all of the city's, um, property and, and the economic, uh, impact of all the right-of-way trees.
Uh, that would be something I'd be happy to work with staff to create.
And the bell curve, that shows the die-off that you're anticipating. I think that that's really eye-opening, and I don't think that the council has seen that information, um, to really have a full understanding of the enormity of the impact.
Do you have any want to say anything about that?
So, there's that. Um, and I know that, uh, you have also been active with the Shade Tree Advisory Group in the past...
Yes.
...pending legislation. Um, and so, I was, uh, curious, uh, last year, um, a bill was passed, but only a meager, what was it, million dollars was set aside for the Department of Agriculture to award...
DNR.
The DNR, thank you. Get those two switched around. The DNR, and so, I was curious, um, what is the Shade Tree Advisory, um, group advocating for at the legislature on behalf of cities and counties and, and other parks?
Yeah, I'm no longer part of that group, so I can't, I can't speak to what they'd be advocating for.
Oh, you're not? I am surprised.
Well, everybody, you know, does their term, and then lets somebody else take a turn.
There you go. Well, thank you for your work and doing that in the past, because I know that you've been wonderful about that, so, thanks.
Yeah.
Counselmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I got a quick, um, few points, and then I'm, it looks like our, we can make, we're looking for a motion to continue this for next year.
Yeah, staff is simply seeking support from council to, um, to continue with this program with Rainbow Tree Care as the, uh, preferred provider, uh, providing residents the... with Rainbow Tree Care as the preferred provider, providing residents the most economical price for treating ash trees. That's what we're looking for today.
I'll get to that motion, but I do want to make compliments to staff here. That data that you showed with Hastings having good success, that gives credit to staff getting the word out, and Hastings saying, "We need to take care of our trees." I appreciate it, and I like the economic part of it. I like trees. So I would ask staff for the future, moving forward, and I know we can't do it right away, but the community I work for does an annual or a biannual tree sale. I think that's the investment we need to start doing, is can we buy in bulk for the community to start replacing these trees and to give them an option to say, "It doesn't have to be an ash tree, it could be any tree." I think it's a good program we should look at, and I was going to bring it up at our workshop that's coming up, that I think this is a good program, so I'll ask staff to research that going forward. But otherwise, great, it was a good 12 pages that you shared, though. I appreciate it. And it's happy to see the success that we're having. So I think we're doing a good job. So with that, I make a motion that we approve, support the staff recommendation of selecting Rainbow Tree Care as a city's 2020 EAB treatment preferred vendor.
Okay. Councilmember Leifeld, seconds. Council discussion. Councilmember Fults?
One last item, Your Honor, and it was further conversation about looking at how it is that we're managing EAB in the right-of-way and utilizing possible grants, as, you know, Councilmember Vonn had just mentioned, being proactive about planting seedlings. There's grants, as just mentioned, that the Department of Agriculture has available, that we missed out on this last go-round, and so to make sure that we could apply for them next go-round. There's also, I know that there's this other website that's dedicated, Minstaff, that is dedicated to these types of issues, and I've seen other grants that are available for planting, replacing ash trees in public lands. And so I think that there are some resources that are out there, and that it would behoove us, since 20% to 25% of our trees within our community are ash trees, and they're all going to die if we don't do something to prevent that, which would be treating them, and if we're not going to treat them, like I said, they're going to die. And the city of St. Paul has been spending millions, literally millions and millions of dollars, in addressing this issue, and so I really feel like we need, it would really behoove us to get out in front of this before it just explodes in our faces, so, thanks.
Thank you. There's a motion, and there's a second. Counts, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails. Now, we have the approval of the Vermillion Falls Natural Resources Management Plan 2020 and 2022 work plan.
And council, briefly, I want to introduce Karen Schick with Friends of the Mississippi River, senior ecologist with them, who is responsible in part in putting together the Natural Resource Management Plan for Vermillion Falls Park, as well as others here in town and a variety of other places. So she's going to share with you some information on what that Natural Resource Management Plan is and what some proposed work is for 2020 to 2022.
Great, welcome, Karen.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So finally, you get the icing on the cake. You get to look at some pretty pictures. I have a charismatic critter for you to look at. So I'm, as Chris said, I'm with Friends of the Mississippi River. If you're not familiar with us, we are a nonprofit in St. Paul. We've been working on, in the Hastings area, for over 20 years now, and actually all the way from Hastings all the way up to Elk River, water quality issues, river corridor issues, development, and land protection and restoration. So that's what I'm here for. We've been working in a number of the city Hastings parks for, like I said, about 20 years now, and Vermillion Falls is a new one that we have not worked at yet. So we did a Natural Resource Management Plan this past summer, and I'll just really quickly take you through kind of some of the highlights of that. So the Falls, Vermillion Falls Park actually came about because of the flooding that happened in 1965, and when all that water came rushing down the river, there were some, a group of citizens that became concerned and said, "You know, this is a really important area. We should do something to protect that." And that group of people actually became, this is according to this article here that was pulled up for me, and that group of people actually became the first Parks Commission in the city of Hastings. So I thought that was pretty interesting. Anyway, so then they were able to purchase that piece of property on the south side of the river, across from the mill, and that's about 25 acres, and that became Vermillion Falls Park. They went ahead and did that development with the overlook, and later on, the pavilion. There were some trails that were put in. And, yeah, that's it. And then actually, not a whole lot has happened at the park since then. There's probably been some plantings and some tree management here and there, but for the most part, there hasn't been a lot of the Natural Resource Management taking place. And so on the left, you see the, one of the areas that is still in pretty good shape without, with a lot of the native plant community intact, and on the right, you see what you might recognize as buckthorn, kind of taking over in there. So that's what a lot of the park is starting to look like now. Again, on the left here, this is more of the ground layer level. This is one of the areas along the river with really nice native vegetation, and this is on the, on the right, did I say the right? So the left is good vegetation, on the right is just solid buckthorn in some of the other areas. So we wrote this management plan, came out, looked at the site this last summer, and we start by kind of taking a big-picture look at the site itself and the connectivity. And you see that the site is in pink here on the map, and both upstream and downstream, we have city parks, Vermillion Linear Park, Old Mill Park on the downstream side, Hastings SNA Beyond That, Gore's WMA. There's just so many parks in this whole corridor here that it's just a really important part of that connectivity. So this is really one piece, and actually, FMR has been working at both Linear Park and Old Mill Park for a number of years now, and so this is the one in between that kind of needs to get done to help connect all those areas together. So we looked at some of the historical vegetation. We surmise, nobody knows absolutely for sure, but we have pretty good evidence that this is probably more or less an oak savanna area, at least in the upper areas, not so much probably next to the, in the gorge. And on the right, you can see one of those big old oak trees, just giant oak trees that are still left out there with spreading branches, and that gives us a pretty good indication also that there was savanna in this area. And then just a quick snapshot of the aerial, from an aerial view, from 1937 all the way to the lower right-hand corners of present day, and the progression of woody vegetation that has happened in the park. So we don't think that there is a whole lot of, like, active use of this parcel of land, you know, even before it was a park. There's not a lot of evidence that it was, you know, there was any agricultural use or grazing and stuff like that. So, but there was a little, just a little bit, but the railroad, of course, went through there. But you can just see a lot of the woody encroachment that has happened over the years. And so then just a little overview also of the topography of the site. We have the gorge bordering the north side of the site, the river itself, and then a lot of the site is actually kind of flat in the upper area, but then there's a former river gorge on the south side, which is more or less dry. Parts of it are wet or carry water during storm events. So that elevation change in the gorge, both the gorges, is about 50 feet, and then overall, the site drops about 80 feet total. So we looked at the existing vegetation, and I forget how to use the mouse here. So this is one of the highest-quality sites of the site, and this is where that gorge runs through, and there is Maple Basswood Forest there, which is really nice native vegetation, not a lot of invasives. Along the river is also very nice, it's music oak forest, and then there's a dry oak forest over here, and those are kind of the nicest areas of the site. And then this blue area is a lot of sort of disturbed forest. There's grassland over here, which is mostly non-native species, and then a disturbed woodland area in here. These are all some of the vegetation surveys that we did, lots and lots of surveys out there. And then we came up with, this is your charismatic critter here, down here, a little skink. So these are some of the things, the interesting things that we found at the site, are kind of the summary of what we found. The concerns are really basically the non-native invasive species, the woody plants in particular, but also smooth broom in the grassland area. There are several areas where there's some old trash debris, just really old stuff, old barrels and things like that. And then there's erosion potential. So these are highly rotable soils over most of the site. It's not getting developed, so that's not really an issue. There is one threatened, state-threatened species out there, and that's this kitten tail over here, and it typically likes oak savanna habitat. There's just a couple of plants that we found out there. It's very, just hanging on by a thread. And then we came up with a plan for what we think it could become. So even though it was oak savanna in the past, that doesn't necessarily mean that we would recommend that for the future, especially in the areas that have really grown in with a lot of other trees. So we would continue to promote this as Maple Basswood Forest, and this would be the music oak forest, and then basically, this whole area over here would be dry oak forest, and then this, most of this area would be savanna with a couple of wooded areas, and this is kind of a ravine that runs through here, so. And then just, here are the pretty pictures. If you haven't been to the site, I encourage you to go there, especially during the summer, not so much, probably interesting now, too. But this is the Maple Basswood Forest, and it feels like a very strange place when you're there. It doesn't feel like any place that you've been before, with these limestone pillars and towers in there. It's very cool. Along the river here is more limestone bluffs and some unique vegetation that you really don't see in many other places in the metropolitan area. Some trails along the river. There is also buckthorn. This is along the river, so there's, it's pretty good there, but there's some big ones as well. And this is the oak forest, and some of those giant trees that are still left out there. And then this is some of the more degraded areas, and you can just see the, you know, pretty dramatic difference from the previous slides in how there's not much here besides And again, just a picture of those big oak trees, and then this is pretty much all buckthorn underneath. They're just crowded out by that, and then some of the trash and debris areas, and more of that. So last fall, we were able to have a little small volunteer event out there. We had contractors who cut the, some of the buckthorn, and then, this is right along the trail overlooked, in the bluffland area overlooking the river, and the volunteers then came afterwards and hauled all the brush out, and the city then carted it away. So it was just a pretty dramatic change. This is before, and this is after, and so that's what we want to do throughout more of the park. So we put together a three, a five-year plan for what we think could happen at the park, and basically broken into three phases. So the blue area down here in the map is what we would propose to do initially, and mostly invasive woody removal, and then also some prescribed burning in some of the plant communities where it historically had fire. And then the second priority area would be this green, and then the third phase would be the grassland area. So right now, so this is a budget that we came up with for doing the entire project. We right now have funding from the State Outdoor Heritage Fund that we could, we think we could do most of the blue area. We haven't, we don't have contractor bids yet, but we think we could accomplish that much right now. And so with that, I would just like to acknowledge our funders. The Tecla Carbon Estate helped with the management plan, as well as the city of Hastings. The Outdoor Heritage Fund, the Carbon Estate and City of Hastings, as well as volunteers, have been and will be helping with the restoration work. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. This was, by the way, presented to the Parks Commission last week, and they approved that, so.
Thank you, Karen. Councilmember Linn?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I had to Google "skink." I don't know how I've missed a skink all my life.
It's one of the three little lizards in Minnesota.
It's adorable. Okay, so prevention, so we, I mean, that looks like a lot of work, it looks really great. We go through and take everything out, and it comes right back. How do we, how do we prevent it? Is it have the skinks team up with some goats, or what do we do? We've done that in the past with other things. So I guess what's the plan for maintaining it long-term? What would that, what would that look like? Is that expensive? Is that...
It is. I mean, there's, the upfront costs for doing the restoration are always more, but over time, it does decrease, but there's, it's more intensive in the first few years. And so what we would be doing is, you know, after you take the big stuff out, that's almost the easy step, because then you get the small stuff that comes back and it's harder to manage. But we, one of the things that we can use is a forestry mower, which kind of cuts everything down, and then we will, we can, there's some areas that are so degraded that we don't have to worry about the natives, really, there's really no natives there, and so we're able to use an herbicide that can treat those seedlings when they come back up, and then we can seed in with native prairie grasses, which will stop the, nothing's going to stop the buckthorn, but it will, it will help to suppress it. And it's, it doesn't mean that we're not going to have to come back. This will be a long-term project, like the other ones that we've been working on, and so, you know, it's, you pick away at it, but you got to start somewhere, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, council, I would accept a motion to support both the Natural Resource Management Plan developed for Vermillion Falls Park and the ecological, ecological restoration management work for 2020, 2022. Councilmember Fults? Second. Councilmember Brox? Any other council discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Thanks, Chris. Okay, Arts Task Force recommendations. Communications Coordinator Lee Stoffel is with us, and Jordan Schaefer. Welcome.
Well, this'll work. This'll work, right?
Hello, councilmembers. Mayor, my name is Jordan Schaefer, and I'm a proud member of the Hastings Public Arts Task Force. I'm a recent graduate and, from the University of Minnesota, where I studied art, art history, and then just recently, this past year, finished my master's in art education. I have lived in Hastings for most of my life, and I'm excited to see how inclusive and welcoming our town has become in recent years to the arts and to the changing social structures of our community. I'm here today to present to you our task force proposal, recommendation for a striking new mural in our community that will encapsulate these ideas and carry their values into the So the art call and the artists. After much deliberation, our task force, in conjunction with Thrive and other community stakeholders, selected a proposal from Pablo Diego Perez Riesgo, aka Calaca, and Daniela Bianchini. Daniela Bianchini was born and raised in Argentina. She was given the opportunity to come to the United States at the age of 18, or 19, sorry, and fell in love with Minnesota. She has been living here since then, and she definitely considers it home. Daniela has worked in several art mediums, but her love and passion is with mosaics. She is very enthusiastic about composing a work of art by bringing many pieces together. And then Pablo, aka Calaca, was born in Santiago de Chile in 1975, and because of the military dictatorship, he was exiled with his parents to Venezuela, a country where he grew up and lived. Pablo is a painter and a muralist. Pablo has exhibited in Caracas, Barcelona, Santiago, and Minnesota. He has painted murals in several countries such as Cuba, Venezuela, Colombia, Argentina, Chile, Catalonia... Chile, Catalonia, Germany, France, and the United States. These are the two artists right here. Here's an example of Daniela's work. This is a piece in St. Paul. It was part of the Chroma Zone Festival in 2019. The close-up image here highlights her use of mosaics, something that we can expect to see in her, in the proposal in just a moment. Here's another work of Daniela's. This is a series of mosaic work commissioned by the City of St. Paul, commissioned by the Downtown Alliance of St. Paul. It's a smaller scale of an example of her work, but it still showcases her commitment to enhancing the local communities through public art. So these are trash receptacles with her mosaic pieces on the outside. And here is an example of Calaca's work. This piece is located at the University of Minnesota, at the Barbara Barker Center for Dance. I just want you to notice the bold use of colors and its crosshatching. It adds a brilliant gritty texture that we can also expect from their proposal. Here's one more example of his portfolio. This one is in Minneapolis. We included this just to showcase his command of scale and his ability to finish very large pieces of work. So without further ado, here is the proposed design for our City of Hastings. This will go on the back of Hastings Family Service, on the north-facing wall along the Here's, here is an image with it superimposed to get an idea of what it looks like. It'll be roughly 90 feet by 18 feet. So this is from the artists themselves. "We are approaching our piece with several subjects in mind. We want to attempt an overall perspective of Hastings evolving and thriving through time. The changes in seasons from spring through migrating birds give us a sense of moving forward into the future. The surrounding nature represents Hastings with its flora and fauna. We want to embrace the importance of our environment. The grandmother figure brings a knowledge of this process and the importance of the past. The family represents the growing diversity of the city. Our characters vary in ethnicities. We want the characteristics of their features to be open to interpretations of different races, accounting for the inclusion and acceptance of the way societies are composed nowadays. The monarch butterflies represent migration, through which is a big component of the growing diversity. The child acknowledges the importance of water and carries it with her, the water of the Mississippi and the St. Corry Rivers, the water that is her history and her future. She will bring the future to the city, and our children, our future generations, bring us hope. The sun in the background also represents that hope for a bright future. This mural makes us think of the inevitable changes and cycles of life. We hope to awaken a feeling of understanding for those cycles, to embrace and welcome the future." And this is continuing with the artist statement. They say, "Our mural will be painted and adorned with details in mosaics. We will use high-quality Nova Color paints suitable for outdoor murals and varnish to protect the mural and promote its durability. The mosaic pieces will be made of stained glass and mirrors, and this part of the process is done in their studio, and the mosaics are secured to a mesh. When ready to install and adhere to the wall, the mosaic pieces will be secured with an appropriate thin set and sealed with grout. All materials are suitable for outdoor use and will endure the harsh Minnesota winters without problems, and no maintenance will be required for this mural." So lastly, why public art? "The demographics of Hastings are changing, and this is something that we need to acknowledge, but also welcome. I grew up in a predominantly white neighborhood just up the street, and through my experiences with student teaching at the middle school, I realized that the future of Hastings is much more diverse. Therefore, our public art needs to reflect these changes, so everyone can see their image reflected in the community at large. There's also the added economic impact from such a vibrant and striking mural. I am a younger millennial myself, and I am keenly aware of how people my age like to showcase their life on Instagram. Public art that is easily accessed and Instagrammable is a proven, is proven to be a key component in economic revitalization. And with every post and geo-tag in front of public art is basically free advertisement for our town and ultimately the businesses in the area. And lastly, I'm an artist, and so I just think this is a super cool thing for our town to have." And with that, can I answer any questions? I'm also here with the task force and Thrive and, who else is here?
H-PAC.
H-PAC. So it's a joint, joint effort.
Great. Thanks, Jordan. Council, any councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, I just want to say that I think this is, this shows a lot of, lot of effort and research and work to find what's going to be a very huge, huge piece of art. So I want to say thank you for the detail of the presentation as well, and really showing us more than just, hey, this is what, is what we landed on. There's a lot of background there that you walked us through, so I appreciate that. I think it, you know, art is always subject to interpretation, so, you know, that is what it is, but I think it looks great, and it's, it's very well thought out and, and, you know, a custom solution for our town, so thank you.
Thanks. Great. Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. Main concern that I have is its longevity and preservation. Now, you've mentioned there's going to be applications of certain treatments that are going to keep it as much in its original state. Do we have a life expectancy on this piece?
I will hand it off to Lee.
Sure.
That was the answer.
Yeah. Thank you, councilmembers. So yes, as part of our call to art, we did request that we wanted the lifespan to be between 15 and 20 years. We, we did stipulate in there that we were looking for low maintenance or no maintenance projects, so that would be low cost to the city to maintain. So that is part of the project, and they, they agreed to those stipulations, so we should expect it to have a lifespan of 15 to 20 years.
Okay. And then, second question, are any modifications having to be made on the Hastings Family Service building then, in order to accommodate the mural?
No. We worked really closely with Chris Cope, just to make sure that they were really comfortable with the situation. They did have a few stipulations that had to do with their business, but not the condition of the building at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Quick question. This absolutely stunning picture, that is absolutely gorgeous. When it's just transferred onto the wall, it is a quite different picture that we're seeing? So I just want to, where the eagle is, there isn't the river running through it. The sunshine around it is quite different. I just want to get an idea that,
Which one's the eagle?
Where, which one is the one they're, they would be using?
It's more, it's pretty much the same. The thing is, is this is a, it's a computer rendering. You know, so that's why we wanted to show examples and samples of their, their work in real life, so that you could see the depth and the different things, be it you have something to add.
But the previous one that you showed us, this isn't, this right here is not what we would see. We would see-
Yeah. We had asked them to make a couple of modifications to their original design, and so, right at the last minute, I just said, just in case we get a question, can you give us another computer rendering of what it'll look like? So you have to keep in mind that this is all made on computer, and their actual work is, you can kind of, it'll have more texture, more depth, more-
Understand. The big piece, though, is at the eagle, for instance. The river is not running through there on the photo you're looking at? So there's a few-
So there's the eagle, there's the two ducks-
Right, on the far left of the photo.
And then the water on the bottom. I don't know, I'm-
Yes. Yeah. So-
So see the picture, see the eagle to the left and the water running through?
Oh, the upper left.
Just so, I mean, there's some-
So the final design, this is the final design, right here.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you. It's absolutely stunning.
I'm sorry about that.
It's beautiful.
I'm Bee Westerberg, also a member, one of the original members of it. And yes, we had a one, just a wonderful time, very intellectual time to decide on this, and a lot of them came up. We wished we had places in town to put some of the others that we had. And we were very conscious of what we were choosing, spending money that was not ours, but we were gifted with the opportunity to spend the money, so we were very conscious of that. We were, another thing that we really talked about, each one that we had, and had its merits and its non-merits. And one of the things we especially looked at is Hastings ready for this kind of thing that this artist is proposing? Some of them, even we weren't quite ready for them. We also made sure that we discussed racial issues. We had several that would have raised various levels of racial issues or kind of things like that, so we were very aware of that. And we wanted to really incorporate all the lovely things of the town and have it as a nice centerpiece and, and of course, as those artists say, oh, look at all that vibrant color! So we thank you for trusting us to make this decision, and this is what we offer to you.
Great. Thank you. It's beautiful. Do you have a timeframe, Lee, when?
So it'll be, obviously, weather-dependent. But we're hoping that ideally, we could have it done for the kickoff of the summer programming with Page, so that that would be kind of like our ribbon-cutting event, as long as the weather cooperates with that.
Sure. Be great. Thank you. Okay, council, I would accept a motion to approve, what's, oh, councilmember Fults, sorry. Did you need to say-
The hour is getting late, but I just really wanted to take the opportunity to thank the task force, the members of H-PAC, and especially Lee Stoffel, for, you know, seeing this through. I, I realized that you were, you were given a project, and it takes a lot of grit to carry some of these initiatives forward, and I know that you had obstacles that were placed in, in front of you. And I'm so glad to see that the group all came together and, and saw this through, because it is just really spectacular. I think people are going to love it. So thank you all very much.
It was, again, great partnership, great to have the support of members of Thrive, members of H-PAC, and the original Arts Task Force working together and really having a unanimous decision. It was great.
Great. Thank you. Okay, council, I'd accept a motion to approve the Biancini and Calaca proposal for a public mural to be located on the near-facing wall of Hastings Family Service, facing Levy Park. Councilmember Leifeld, councilmember Brox? Any other council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion prevails. Thank you again. It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Attorney Dan, legal?
Last but not least, Your Honor. The council was asked tonight to conduct a hearing on alleged alcohol compliance check failure involving Jake's Discount Liquor in Hastings. Before starting that hearing, without getting into any factual issues, I wanted to make the council aware that yesterday I spoke with Mr. Rich Jacobson, the owner of Jake's Discount Liquor. We discussed some of the issues he would be raising as part of the hearing, in where he believes there may be a factual basis for the city council to find that no alcohol compliance check failure occurred. We also discussed the possibility of reaching a stipulation that would avoid the need of hearing tonight. Generally, I believe this matter could be resolved without a hearing if the city council would authorize me to enter into a written stipulation with the owner, acknowledging that the alcohol sale to an underage person did occur, imposing a $500 monetary penalty that would be paid within the next 30 days, and imposing a three-day liquor license suspension that would be stayed or not made effective upon the condition that the licensee enrolls in the best practices program with the city. I discussed this with other city staff, and we support the concept. The outcome would be similar to what was imposed by the city council on three establishments who failed compliance checks in 2016 and which were not at that time enrolled in the best practices program. We have confirmed that Jake's Discount Liquor has never had an alcohol compliance check failure since it opened, and in speaking with the owner, they had been enrolled in the best practices program, but it appeared that enrollment lapsed by inadvertence and not by any intentional direction of the owner. I think there is merit in considering the stipulation, because a liquor license ordinance does not allow me, as city attorney, to propose any stipulation other than what is provided for in the ordinance, which would be a $1,000 monetary penalty and a three-day liquor license. So I'm not able to propose stipulations without the council's approval, as we would in a criminal-type case. If the council was inclined to proceed with a stipulation in this manner, I would propose that one of the city council members make a motion authorizing me, as city attorney, to enter into a stipulation with the licensee containing those terms. We would then have the owner sign the, the stipulation, presumably right now, with the licensee containing those terms. Upon their signature, I would sign, and then the council would be asked to approve that stipulation, which would complete the process tonight. Staff would then follow up on ensuring that the payment and the best practices enrollment is completed. Certainly, if the council is not inclined to do that, or if the motion is brought and not, or fails, then we would proceed with the hearing tonight, and both sides are ready proceed, to proceed with that hearing. Because there remains a possibility that we will need to have the city council make factual determinations with that hearing, we should not be discussing any factual issues at this stage before the hearing. I also don't believe there's really an opportunity for negotiation here. But if the council would be so inclined to resolve the matter with the $500 monetary penalty and a three-day suspension that stayed or not effective on the condition that the best practices program be enrolled in by the licensee, then I would ask that a council member make that motion a second, and then we would complete the paperwork in a matter of minutes here, and then the council could complete the process. I can stand for any questions. I tried to talk pretty quick there, because I know it's getting late.
Counsel?
Your Honor, I'll make that motion that the legal counsel, just without rehashing everything I just heard, I think the key, the reason I'm making this motion is it's consistent with what we've done in the past, and I think that's important, that we stay consistent as a council. Thanks.
Councilmember Balsanik? Okay. Any other council discussion? All those, or, yes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion prevails.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could just be given a couple moments to deal with-
Sure. You may.
Your Honor, we do have the signed stipulation of facts and civil sanctions, so I propose that the council approve that by bringing a motion to approve the stipulation, and then staff would follow up with that after this meeting.
Okay.
I would need a so moved or a motion to approve.
Okay. Second? Councilmember Leifeld, and a second by councilmember Brox? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion prevails.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes. Are there any other announcements? Or are there any announcements, council? Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess, too, I'm going to be meeting tomorrow with Mr. Jim Biermeyer to have a discussion about the whack-and-sack fees and how that all goes about tomorrow afternoon at 3:00 PM. about tomorrow afternoon at 3:00 p.m. And then Thursday morning, I have a board of directors meeting with the Dakota Communication Center 911 Board of Directors, 8:00 a.m.
Councilmember Bland?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I don't want to, I don't want to set the stage today because I haven't told my colleagues about it yet here that are on, we're on an ad hoc committee, councilmember Balsanik, myself, and councilmember Leifeld, about transit. And I think that that ad hoc, it's never, we've never used it. I think the time is coming near because it has a lot to do with our loop bus, it was just a start. There was an email that floated. And I talked to Ann about it today. I, for administration reasons, I'll bring it up probably at the next council meeting, that we start this discussion about transit. And it'll include internal, potentially external, but I think that we should at least start the discussion at the committee level on transit. I don't want to set it today, but I want to give administration some time, too, to think that I'd like to use that committee as our discussion items. And it's about the loop bus to start. Thank you.
Okay. I have a few. Thrive, Thursday, will be held at YMCA at 6:30 p.m. on Thursday, February 20. This month theme, this month's theme will support the Hastings Reads theme of speaking, listening, and the space of in-between. These concepts helped us, help us to learn to be better allies and learn how to support those who are treated as other. On Friday, February 28, Hastings Reads will host a family event starting at 6:00 p.m. at the YMCA. Activities include pizza, books, completing a service learning project as a family. You do not need to be a member of the YMCA to attend and no registration is required. Saturday, February 22, the Hastings Police Department and friends will participate in the law enforcement polar plunge for the Special Olympics. To register or donate, go to www.plungemn.org and search for Hastings Sharks at the South Metro Event. Public Safety Committee of City Council will meet Thursday, February 20 at 7:30 a.m. Planning Commission will meet Monday, February 24 at 7:00 p.m. Our next council meeting is Monday, March 2 at 7:00 p.m. Council, if there are, oop, councilmember Lund?
It's Lisa's birthday.
Barely.
For another hour?
We could run much longer and it won't be.
Yeah. So, happy birthday, councilmember Leifeld.
Yes, happy birthday.
You're 21.
Sure. If that is the end, council, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Leifeld, councilmember Balsanik, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Adjourn.
(coughing)
Longest meeting.